Tom, Tom, I can't talk about that right now.
Recording in progress.
You don't have sound?
I don't know.
Welcome to the planning board for Monday, August 23rd. We'll start our
No one has sound.
Public comment.
Okay, why don't we have sound?
That's a good question.
Anybody have their hands up?
Okay, now we have sound.
You should probably ask again if they didn't hear it. Any public comment? I think we're good. Any comment from any member of the board?
No.
No, sir. And we do have one member of the board that's joining us remotely this evening, just so everybody's aware. Our first appointment, 101 Pleasant Street, which was continued from July 26th. If the applicant would like to step forward and bring us up to speed?
No, these are last meetings planned?
I believe so. So, good evening. Good evening. So, nothing on these plans has changed since our last scheduled meeting?
Right. Same set of plans. The only thing we did, first of August, well, I guess right after the second July meeting, we, August 5th actually, we submitted a letter with a waiver request, which, do you have copies of that, I imagine? Or, I've got extra copies if you...
I'm pretty sure we have.
I say, I think we need, yes.
Give me one second. We just, we have two meetings worth of stuff to sort through, so. But essentially, you were looking for a waiver on the width of the road, as I recall.
Yeah, what we wanted to do was, because at the July meeting, we were basically down to, we took care of everything, and there was still a little hesitation and discussion about the retaining wall being inside of the right-of-way. So, we went back and took a look at what it would take to get the wall out of the right-of-way. And so, we came up with this waiver request to where the retaining wall is to bring the, reduce it to 35 feet. Doesn't affect any of the, you know, the grass plot, any of the utilities or roadway itself. So, we submitted a letter and with a sketch attached. And so, we're basically asking the following waiver request. Article 4 Design Standards, Paragraph 32542C1A. A partial waiver on the right-of-way width to reduce said width from 50 feet to 35 feet between proposed roadway station 36 and 2+17, as shown on the attached plan. Purpose of the right-of-way reduction is to ensure the proposed retaining walls are owned by and responsibility of the lot owners versus the town, should the road be accepted or taken by the town. The request is justified as the town has expressed a desire to have the walls outside of the right-of-way. Granting a waiver is therefore in the public's best interest. Furthermore, sole function of the walls is to reduce the wetland loss, which is also in the best interest of the public. Reduction of the right-of-way does not derogate from the purpose of the regulation. It is not detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, and the same objective of the regulation is provided. A right-of-way provides a necessary width for required roadway improvements and utilities. And then that, you've got the sketch here showing how it narrows down, seven and a half feet on each side.
Any questions or comments from members of the board relative to this waiver?
Mr. Chairman, could I just get it clear? I just want to make certain procedurally.
Sure.
For the record, David Plunkett, representing the applicant. I just want to make certain that the last meeting, we had Mr. Allison Brenner and Torgerson present. And then we, I know that we had discussed that, the ability to review, and I'm not sure who's on the, who's on remote tonight.
Mrs. Bertram.
Bertram, okay. So, do we have to do anything in regards to?
No, we have all certificates from
Okay.
From Mrs. Bertram and from Mr. Cole.
I just wanted to make sure in that, you know, procedurally that we were all set. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And at this point, we're just looking at the waiver request as it relates to this project.
I have a question for a land use director. Have we ever granted a waiver to the right-of-way width?
What I can say is, in the seven or so years I've been here, we have not, because this is the first subdivision that has been filed in that time. Previous to that, about six months before I started here, there was a subdivision approved, which met full width, if I remember correctly. And I can't say that you never have, but in my experience, going back probably to 2010 or so, I don't think there have been waivers issued.
And that predates me.
Any other questions or concerns from the board on the waiver at this point? Mr. Brenner or Mrs. Bertram?
I'm just taking one more moment to process, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Paula.
Just a question, actually, I think for Mr. Bernie. How do we ensure throughout this process, with the specific lots, that of their requirements relative to ownership of the wall or relative to stormwater? Is there something placed on their deeds referencing the permit? Or how does that work so that when someone buys a lot, that they're aware of the restrictions associated with the lot?
So...
Can we fix? It's feedback. Just get your microphone.
I understand this. It usually, not through the computer, so.
Maybe mute the computer.
No, because then no one on Zoom. So... The condo documents that were submitted by the applicant do reference the individual lots and their responsibilities? Their responsibilities? So, it would, that would be attached to the deeds?
In theory, allow for the attachment of those requirements to their specific law?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, if the board would feel even more comfort level in dealt with this in other situations where we agree as a condition that not only do we have the association, homeowners association recorded, which we had submitted to the board, granting the lien position of the town, that we would make specific reference in the recitation of description of property and the deed, making specific reference to, subject to the terms and conditions of the, you know, association, declaration of association, recorded book and page. So, if that's something that, you know, the board would be looking for an additional comfort level, that that would be fine as a condition.
Yep. And I appreciate your input to that effect. The challenge for the, and speaking for myself, but from my experience dealing with these situations, what we as a board are trying to do is avoid situations where the town becomes liable for this infrastructure. And here, where you're looking to reduce the right-of-way, the walls are very close to the edge of the right-of-way. And reasonably, if the homeowner that, or the homeowners' association that now owns those structures isn't in a position to financially upkeep those structures, and they pose a threat to the right-of-way, then the town's in a difficult situation, because now you have a right-of-way, a road that's been accepted, and the town's trying to maintain that in a sidewalk and so on. And now you have a retaining wall that's failing that could potentially be impacting the passability of that road. And it just becomes a difficult situation. And we've, we've had situations in town where drainage structures haven't been maintained or things weren't being kept up by a homeowners' association or a landowner, and then it becomes the town's problem. So, you know.
And we heard that concern at that, I think, two meetings prior. And part of the submittal that we've given to the town, you know, contains a very detailed provision relative to if that were ever the case, it's still the homeowner's responsibility because it's deemed a municipal lien, which then gets attached to their real estate taxes if they don't. You know, if the town has to do anything, then it becomes part of the municipal obligation of each lot owner. Same force and effect as the real estate taxes.
The challenge with those situations is, it puts a town, that any town, in the position where they need to enforce that right and force a homeowners' association or a property owner to do that. Whereas if these walls were 50 feet outside of the right-of-way, regardless of what happened to them, it's far enough away from the paved surface where it's less of an issue. And I understand what you're trying to do, and I appreciate it. It's, you know, certainly a step in the right direction, but I don't necessarily think that it ultimately is in the best interest of the town to approve these type of waivers. But I would defer to the other members to see what their thoughts were on the process.
I entirely agree with what you've just stated, and as I previously said, I'm not in favor of it.
Excuse me. Similarly, Mr. Chair, I agree. I appreciate what the applicant is trying to do with trying to find a good middle ground here. I don't know that this is it. I don't know what it could be realistically, as I keep, as I learn the different limitations we have in this scenario.
Yep. A question I have, and not that it really pertains to your business in front of the planning board, but do you have an order of conditions with conservation? Have you already?
I, I do not. We've been, we've been delaying because of, well, we had some membership attendance issues and...
But they're aware of the project.
Oh, yeah. No, I've been, I've been before explaining to them what's going on, and they've gotten this, you know, the same information. And what I'll have to do is, you know, go back to them, move the walls outside of the right-of-way, which is going to send the wetlands loss and double the replication area, just a lot more buffer zone impact. That's what we'll have to do. But, I mean, I can't go to MEPA and say I didn't come here and ask you people if I could do this, because they want things as narrow as possible to save the wetlands. So, that's really why I'm here.
Okay. Mrs. Bertram, do you have anything to add before we entertain a motion on the waiver?
I don't necessarily have anything to add. I will just say that I am in agreement with the other members that I have concerns regarding the town becoming liable for this, for this wall. While I understand the reasoning for asking for the waiver, I would not be in support of it.
All right. Mrs. Adams, would you like to comment?
I sympathize with the applicant wholeheartedly. I would just say that I don't think that this is an acceptable solution from the perspective of the right-of-way or from the perspective of the wetlands. I won't speak for the Conservation Commission. I'm speaking as my, from my perspective as a planner, where I've dealt with situations like this, because you're not really getting 100% of either. MEPA isn't that unreasonable. They will work with you. I've worked on many a MEPA project that was far more encumbered than this. What they want to see is a realistic solution that solves the problem in an effective, efficient manner. They don't nitpick. They understand the complexities of land use development in challenging sites. But they want to see a complete solution that will solve the problem and remain in effect for a good long time so that either MEPA, DEP, or the town has to come back in a short amount of time, or the applicant, and address the problem. So, from that perspective, I wouldn't be in favor of the waiver for that reason, and because it's new development. It should comply with the bylaws as written. It's, it's not an if, or, or if, then. It's a weighing, that you have to find a middle ground that addresses all of the significant impacts.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the waiver? Oh, entertain a motion.
I would move that we do not approve a waiver for the right-of-way for the Pleasant Street project.
I would second.
All those in favor, and we'll do a roll call vote, because Mrs. Bertram's participating remotely. Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And aye for myself. So, the waiver is denied. Is there anything else you would like to discuss relative to the project, other than?
No, I mean, we've done everything else. Everything else complies. You know, we simply need to slide the walls over a little bit.
Okay. And I recall there were some issues with the amount of cover over the pipes, but I think
We took care of all that.
That's, and that shouldn't be affected by the location of the walls? Okay. So, it seems like we're in pretty good shape. If you can come back to us with the 50-foot right-of-way. Adam, do you have, oh, you have the form right there. There you go. So, if there's nothing else, we will need a motion to continue to, we need to know when they'd like to come back.
I don't know if they want to discuss with Conservation and then come back, or just come back with the walls altered and move through that process.
I'm seeing Conservation, I don't think it's next week. When is the plan going to meet again?
September 13th.
Yes.
Yeah, I think Conservation meets the first or the second.
Yeah, I think they're the first, first and third Wednesday.
So, would you like to continue to the 13th?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just, is there any way, if that's the only issue, that moving the wall out of the right-of-way, would there be any way to have a conditional vote? You know, an approval subject to the wall being moved outside of the right-of-way? Or is your preference to come back after that's established?
Well, two things. One is, my personal preference would be to see the plan completed. But secondly, as a board, we typically close a public hearing and then vote the decision at the following meeting. And that allows time for the administration to go through and put all the conditions in and prepare the draft so that we're presented with the written decision.
If you would like, we can prepare a decision for the 13th, which you can see ahead of time. And if the only outstanding issue is the wall, that might facilitate that two-week span being reduced. But that would be at the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Bertram.
I would not, personally, I would not be opposed to that. I would want included in the decision, a requirement that the deed for each property reference the book and page of the homeowners' association documents, as was suggested by applicant's counsel.
Okay. Do you have any comments in regards to seeing the draft before the September 13th meeting?
I certainly would like to see the plan. I'm not sure if you're talking about the draft of the permit or the plan. Certainly, before we vote, I would like to see the full plan. But I'm not necessarily opposed to voting on the 13th. And if Adam has a decision that's satisfactory, I wouldn't be opposed to signing it at that point. I would be opposed to making a conditional approval.
Okay.
At this point in time.
All right.
Through the chair, also, they prepared stormwater calculations, and I assume they've been prepared with the 35-foot right-of-way?
Pardon me?
This, excuse me, I'm sorry. The stormwater calculations that have been prepared and submitted, they, I assume they were prepared with the 35-foot right-of-way, or were they?
No, with the original.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't change it for the 35.
Okay, very good.
So, we'll need a motion to continue to September 13th at 6:35 PM.
I would move to continue the public hearing for 101 Pleasant Street to September 13th at 6:30 PM.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And aye for myself.
I think, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next appointment is a public hearing for 711 Massachusetts Avenue, which was continued from June 28th.
I think Wes froze.
We also have?
All right. Do we have an applicant doing?
Wesley Fliss from Whitman Bingham.
Wes Fliss from Whitman Bingham is up there freezing and unfreezing. And I did see Eric Fowler.
Eric Fowler is here also.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, is it possible for the, for us to have a louder volume for the people who are not in attendance?
That would be great, if it's possible. Let me go ask the booth.
All right. Okay. So, as I recall, we had a sightline issue that was going to hopefully be addressed through a grading easement, and not sure what else. That was a primary issue with this project, so if you could bring us up to speed on that, that'd be great.
Sure. And so, a couple of weeks ago, we had submitted the revised plans, taking care of the sightline issues and also taking care of some of the comments that came up from Graves Engineering with regards to drainage. On August 20th, Mr. Walsh from Graves Engineering issued a final review letter going over the revisions that we made and stating that he was comfortable with our grading that we showed on the adjacent property to take care of the sightline issues to the east of the property. What we did also submit, I submitted as part of the revised plans, I did submit that agreement between the abutter to the east and the property owner, the memorandum of agreement for that easement, so that the board could see there is something in writing for that grading easement to accomplish the site distance requirement. And so, we do have a document of such with the abutter to the east for that. And as you can see in the August 20th letter from Mr. Walsh, he seemed comfortable, like I said, with site distance issues and also with the revisions we made to handle the drainage request that he had made. And so, at this point, the only outstanding issue that I could see is as part of the site plan approval requirements, had to do with number of, or the size of trees that needed to be shown on the plan. And so, it's under Section 4.1.1.16. The plan needs to identify any existing significant trees. Since the property is mainly wooded, we didn't locate individual trees on the property. And so, we would be asking for a waiver from that requirement. And that was the only thing that really is outstanding after the revisions to the plan, would be that one item, requesting a waiver to show that we didn't have to show every single tree on the plan. But other than that, like I said, you know, it seemed technically, technically standpoint, it seems like we're, we came to an agreement with Graves Engineering with regards to the changes, and that's where the project stands now.
Okay. So, I'll open it up to the members of the board. Questions, concerns regarding this project?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Bertram.
I do have one question. In looking at the comments that we received from the DPW department, Mr. Olivia recommended that an alternate location for the 8-inch sewer run between the two buildings along Mass Ave be looked at. Has that been done?
Yes, we did receive those comments. And so, what we would ask is that we be able to work with Mr. Olivia on those comments. We are able to accommodate some of his comments, but a couple of his comments, we'd like to have a conversation with him outside of the planning board, because there was a couple of requests that he made that we did not think that we could meet necessarily. But there are some of the other issues that we could definitely meet. And so, we have worked up a draft, and it's something that we want to have a conversation with him separate from the planning board, I guess. And I know if that's something that the board can condition, that we just get approval from the Highway Department with regards to sewer connections.
Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Bernie?
Yes.
If the sewer lines are relocated, because the recommendation is to relocate the 8-inch sewer line, would that be a de minimis change of our approval?
No, I mean, there's a couple of ways it could be handled. The board could just look at it as a field change done with the approval of the DPW director, or they could come back as a de minimis change and say, we now have this approval from the DPW director. He wants the sewer here, which is, you know, 50 feet down the way, because it makes this sense. And the board could look at it and say, great, it's not a significant change. It doesn't change the layout of the project. It doesn't change the function of the project. It's really just where the pipe is underground.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? I have a couple of questions. One is, it appears that some of the proposed grading easement is actually in the right-of-way that I believe is under the jurisdiction of Mass Highway. Have you obtained permission from Mass Highway to do the necessary grading?
No. Once we get past the planning board approval, then we will submit for the curb cut permit. But until we had approval from the planning board and we weren't permit. But until we had approval from the planning board, and we weren't going to submit for that permit in case there were other changes with regards to the project. I know at one point, there was some discussion about moving the driveway further down to the west. And so until we had the driveway location locked down, so that we could, on the application, put down the exact stationing with regards to the state layout, we weren't going to apply for the state curb-cut permit.
Okay.
And so that is something on our list to do. We are going to file with them, and also the Conservation Commission. But the way we looked at it, there were kind of steps in the way we were trying to get approvals, and we wanted to take care of the planning board first, so that we knew that the entrances was where it was going to be, and that the peer review for the planning board was going to be completed, so that when we do go in front of the Conservation Commission, we can have that conversation about stormwater.
Okay. In your discussions with the DPW, have you discussed the paving moratorium? Because I believe 2A has been paved in the last five years.
That's also Mass Ave. Yeah.
Okay.
So if Mass Ave controls the road, their moratorium would control, and they would be the ones who would issue authorization to cut if it's inside the moratorium, and they would lay out the requirements for what would be required to mitigate any cutting.
Are you positive on that? Because I believe that when O'Brien was looking at cutting open 13...
Well, 13 was done under the tip, but it's not a Mass Ave-controlled road. It's a local-controlled road.
All right. I'm just trying to...
Yeah, there's a lot of, like, weird nuance to it, because Mass Ave controls that road. They control the moratorium. We control 13, but we use state money to pave it because it's a federal-eligible road.
Well, and his particular project was cutting into 2A.
Yes, so that was a problem at that point as well.
I'm just trying to flush these issues.
Yeah, 2A, the town could have denied him, and it would have been...
And then, it's my understanding that this project is in the watershed protection district. Have you done the calculations to determine the 30%?
Yes. And so as part of the latest set of revisions, we updated the building layouts to be smaller to what the actual foundations are. So the original plans we had submitted to the board, actually, the footprint of the buildings were bigger than what's going to be built up there. And so we were actually able to shrink down the limit of disturbance to make sure that we're under that 30% disturbance. And so that we're at like 29.5% or something like that at this point. And so that's why, if you look at the back of the rear units, we show a retaining wall also back there, a small retaining wall. That's also to limit the amount of disturbance on the property. So we did make sure that, we do stay under that 30% number. I know that was a question that you had at the last meeting, so we did make sure in the revisions that we made, we made sure that we also accommodated that number.
Okay. Can you make sure that that...
I can add that note to the plan if you want.
Is reflected on the plan?
Yep.
Another question. You did site distance calculations from the proposed driveway? Is that correct?
Yep. So if you look at Sheet 1 of the updated plans...
Are we not looking at updated plans?
No, you are. The previous, so the sheet you're looking at there is Sheet 2. On Sheet 1, we show site distance, and we showed approximately 350 feet. And so we actually showed on the existing conditions plan, because it was the less busier of the plans. And so that's where we had shown the calculation on that plan. And so, like I said, we're about 350 feet. I know when Jeff Walsh from Graves was out there, and then he said it in his letter, he measured it approximately 342 feet is what he came up with. So we're pretty much both close to that same number.
I'm still not seeing it on the plan.
It's up on the screen.
And if you look at Mr. Walsh's August 20th letter, he talks about it being sufficient for a 44-mile-an-hour design speed. And right now, I know, obviously, the posted speed limit, I think, is out there is 30, but I know, obviously, everybody knows that the, you know, speed out there necessarily isn't 30 miles an hour, but with that site distance, it comes up to 44 miles an hour.
Yeah. Well, and it is bookended by two 40-mile-an-hour zones, and it switches back to 30. Interesting spot.
I'm trying to find the stormwater.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Bertram.
On Sheet 5, it notes that prior to construction, the soil testing will be performed to confirm the two groundwater offset is achieved. Will that be a condition of any approval, Adam? And if a two-foot isn't approved, isn't achieved, and it would come back to us? How does that work?
I'm sorry, can you ask that again? I had a hard time hearing you.
Okay. On Sheet 5 of the plans, under the general notes section, it states that prior to construction, soil testing will be performed to confirm if the two-foot groundwater offset is achieved. So my question is, prior to construction, they do the groundwater testing in the event that the two-foot groundwater offset is not achieved?
Yeah, I mean, that's a condition I would think the board would want to add to the approval, since it's a site-specific, project-specific issue.
Okay.
And if I could just quickly talk about that, too, is if you look at the grades of the basins, the basin's actually built in fill, so there won't be an issue with regards to offset the groundwater.
Do you have the site distance plan? It's up on the screen. I don't think we have it. I haven't found it. I haven't seen it. Any other questions or concerns regarding this project? We don't have the site distance plan, but...
You all got it digital. I know it's here. I thought it was in the paper copies.
And I recall reviewing our review engineers' comments that the site distance had been addressed, so I don't, I'm comfortable with it, as long as everybody else is.
If it's something you want to see, Matt, I can probably call it up on my machine.
The site distance is what I was curious about.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
You're welcome.
Any other concerns? Any other comments from the applicant?
Not at this time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Bertram. Yep.
Question for Adam. The reporting, we've talked about stormwater reporting, and the need to supply reports, et cetera. I'm assuming that you will put that in the conditions based on the operation and maintenance plan for stormwater?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, again, I'm going to infer that the board will follow their standard procedure, where they close the hearing, and they vote at the next meeting with approval in hand in order to sign and review at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? I don't think we have any hands up. So at this point, we would entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and then discuss the decision and conditions at our next meeting.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for 711 Massachusetts Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing, Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next appointment is 97 Cross Street, 125 Cross Street, 430 Mulpus Road, 440 Mulpus Road for stormwater.
This is a new hearing, so we'll need to read the...
Announcing.
Yes.
Due the honors, Mr. Bernie.
I can blow our eardrums out. If you would like to read it, please do.
Okay. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on August 9th, and in fact, it's today, 2021, 6:35 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass, to hear and review a stormwater management permit under Chapter 204, Stormwater and Storm Sewers of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg for property located at 97 Cross Street, MAP 014/0005, 125 Cross Street, MAP 014/0003, 430 Mulpus Road, MAP 014/0002, and 440 Mulpus Road, MAP 014/0004, Lunenburg, Mass. Owner applicant is Harbor Classic Homes LLC, 493 Lancaster Street, Leominster, Mass, 01453. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office, 960 Mass Ave, Lunenburg, Mass. This meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable on Facebook, the public access Facebook page, and I think that's it.
Excellent. Is the applicant here with us this evening?
Yes, I am. I'm Ron Corridue, owner of Harbor Classic Homes.
All right. Would you like to walk us through your project?
Well, it's a property that I had purchased, already approved, A and R approved, and gone through this conservation, and now we're going through your stormwater approvals. I received yesterday a review from Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering, and I have contacted both John Grenier and Ken O'Field to make whatever adjustments he has prior requested. And at that point right now, they are doing those approvals, I'm sorry, those changes at this time. It looked mainly that it was clerical omissions from the plan, just things that needed to be added number-wise on the plan. But I did note that he didn't see any problems with it. He didn't have any issues with the plan. So my understanding now is we will have to, or you will extend us to two weeks to apply those revisions. That's all I know at this point.
I'll open it up. Comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Bertram.
So the stormwater maintenance plan for this property is fairly extensive. It talks about street sweeping every spring, the roadways, and the individual driveways. It talks about inspecting the basins and removing sediment if over two inches. After a storm event of one inch of rainfall, there needs to be an inspection inspected every six months, mowing of the basin bi-yearly. It also talks about the need to engage an engineer in certain circumstances. So my question is, is if these are individual lots, how do we ensure all of that happens on each individual lot?
Got a question directed to me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, because this is new, the stormwater is new to me of the town of Lunenburg. So this is something I really would like to understand myself. If we have to put it in people's deeds, or we have to have it set up in some fashion, I'm sorry, but I have to be told about this, and then make sure it's included in whatever proper procedures necessary.
Okay. My concern is that if an engineer needed to be engaged to address stormwater, I want to make sure that there's funding to do so. And I don't know how we set this up, as the property is individual homes. It's a fairly intensive inspection process, and a fairly intensive maintenance plan. And I'm very concerned that homeowners will not understand the ramifications of the stormwater components on their lots. And I don't know what we do in the event that an engineer needs to be engaged, and how we make sure funds are available for that.
I understand, and I do apologize for me not completely understanding the stormwater protection that the town of Lunenburg has, as my engineers are not available tonight. So unfortunately, you're hearing from me as the owner. But I will assure that we will look into every part of this, and make sure that everything's addressed as needed for the town of Lunenburg.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board have comments at this point? I mean, we're going to need a couple of weeks for their engineer to go back over the review engineer comments, but...
Well, I echo Paul's concerns. And, I mean, there's one recharge area that's split across two lots. So other than that, I think it would be fairly straightforward to charge the individual lots with the maintenance of the individual infrastructure, but that is a tricky spot, I think, between lots two and three, two and four, sorry.
So, Mr. Chair, tonight, are we just looking to continue this, so that the applicant's engineers can take a look and respond?
Well, my thought process would be that it'd be helpful for us to flush out any sort of issues, and make the applicant aware of those issues, so that in the next two weeks, as he works through the comments that the review engineer had, that we can hopefully build some consensus and address everything in a timely manner. I share Mr. Allison's concern about the recharge area between lots two and four, and I know we've already approved an A and R on this project, but I don't know if it would be possible to reshape that recharge area, so that it's all on one lot. I would assume that it'd make the most sense to put it on Lot 2, so that the ownership of the maintenance activities falls all with a single individual.
The problem I would see with that is that the stormwater is coming from both lots, so the onus of maintaining that detention basin, which does not only serve that lot, would fall on one individual versus the properties that are utilizing it. And in the event that an engineer does have to be engaged, it can become an expensive proposition.
Yeah. Well, and I don't know how that, there's another recharge area on Lot 4, further up the driveway, which I assume is just addressing their driveway, but without looking at all the topography, I would assume that some of that recharge area, number three, is water coming off of Lot 4.
And I would want, in any decision that we issue, specific reference to the stormwater maintenance and operation that's on file with the town, because I want individuals to understand what they're getting into when they purchase these properties. Because as you all know, if stormwater structures are not maintained in accordance with the operation and management plan, they're not going to do what they're supposed to do. And these do eventually drain to wetlands. So that's my concern, is I just want to make sure everyone is aware of what their responsibilities are.
I have a question for the applicant. Lot 1 doesn't appear to have any sort of development. Is that...
I did not purchase Lot 1.
Okay. So that existing, there's no work to be done around that existing house and barn?
No.
Okay. Where are you at with conservation with this project?
This is completely signed off, as Steve Preston Engineering had all the conservation completed before I purchased this.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, Matt Morrow has already signed off on this.
Another comment, I see that they've got crushed stone driveway, which is going to impact the drainage calculations. Is there any kind of, is there any kind of way we can ensure that this does not become paved?
I mean, you can include it in the condition.
Okay, well, crushed stone is pervious and pavement is not, so that would affect the drainage considerably.
Both of their coefficients are over 90, correct?
Crushed stone, I think is in the 80s. I'm not positive, but...
So, the only pavement on these projects is the apron coming off of the public way?
And there would be pavement at the garage. I normally pave, my standard is 60 feet from the garage, so width of the garage, about 60 feet, so asphalt at the house. That's my normal way I do it.
Okay, and that's reflected on the plan here, there's small lines here that you can see.
Right, and all the stormwater calculations, as far as I know, are based on the gravel base driveway, so I would agree with Mr. Allison that that would need to be a condition of the approvals.
Mr. Chair, knowing that I do not have the same engineering background that some of my other members of the board do, I see the proposed 12-inch HDP in a few areas. What is 12-inch HDP?
HDPE, high-density polyethylene.
Oh, let's see, the E.
I would assume that that's what they're referring to, because that makes the most sense. So, yeah, so the HDPE is just the Interstate Standard Pipe.
Oh, yeah, so that's effectively pipes to be moving. Does it, and again, I don't know what standard protocol here, but I see those crossing the lot lines in multiple areas. Is that standard protocol? Is that something that we need to be concerned about for future maintenance?
Yeah, actually, that is, that's a good point. So, in that regard, I guess there would need to be drainage easements on each lot. If there's infrastructure that connects one lot to another, there needs to be an easement on one lot for the other lot to access that for improvement or repair. Isn't that correct, Adam?
Yeah, in general, it makes the most sense. I mean, it's looking more and more like some sort of maintenance association or inter-lot agreement would be the more appropriate vehicle for ensuring the maintenance, as Mrs. Bertram requested. That creates, you know, a responsible entity, it creates the potential and ability to collect and have funds available, and would prevent one individual from taking a lion's share of the responsibility for having more drainage on their site.
I would concur with that.
Those easements could be done after the A and R, correct?
Yeah, I mean, typically, they're... Mr. Coyview owns all of the property, he's granting easement essentially to himself at this point.
So, he doesn't need to go back and...
No, because he's not changing the lot lines, he's creating theoretical access paths that is more of a legal document than something that he would want put on a recorded plan for everybody's benefit, but it doesn't involve the town in any way, other than the board requiring it as part of the plan.
Any other concerns from the board at this point?
Well, it's kind of minutia, but the legend, excuse me, the line types representative of property lines, edge of wetlands, 100-foot buffer zone are all the same in the legend. They appear different on the plan.
Oh.
And I don't, I don't see any detail for a recharge base, I see detention basin detail, but I don't see anything for a recharge, which I think is...
I think that was on Mr. Graves' review. He asked if that had to be placed on there as a typical.
I'm sorry, did you hear?
Because that's what I thought I read.
Yeah, his comment was that it was on Graves' review letter to detail that out.
Okay.
Which I believe we received that review today.
You did.
For this, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Burney that we need to look at some sort of association, because if you read the stormwater management plan, it talks about, you know, it's imperative that adequate vegetation be made, it talks about the emergency spillway being evaluated, an additional riprap being required, so I'm just very concerned that with one individual taking responsibility for this, it's going to be cost prohibitive. So, I believe, based on the review of the plan and review of the stormwater management plan, that these basins serve more than just the lot that they are on, and I just want to make sure that they're maintained adequately, and I think the best way to do that would be do some kind of homeowners association to do that.
Okay. How do you feel, Mr. Brenner and Mr. Allison, in regards to a homeowners association? Because I know that creates a fair amount of additional work for the applicant, but under the circumstances, it may be the appropriate option.
I'm trying to imagine individual homeowners attempting to cope with this, and all we're going to have is a bunch of failed stormwater, a bunch of failed stormwater.
And angry homeowners.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm thinking two or three buyers down the line, because things don't get communicated clearly between them, and no matter how good we set it up now, without some kind of organization to carry it on, 20 years from now, they're going to be on the third owner, and there's going to be problems.
So, yeah, to answer your question, I would agree with the homeowners association concept, but, I mean, you look at Lot, the one up on the corner, what lot is that? Lot 3. Lot 3, all of its stormwater is retained on its lot, but the configuration and the topography existing for those other three, it's just, it looks like it would be near impossible to control all the stormwater on the individual lots.
Well, Lot 5 is all its own, too.
Yeah.
Pretty much, so 3 and 5 are fine, it's lots 2 and 4 that are...
In the stormwater maintenance site records, it's, I've never seen this before, it says enclosed within the plan is a member roster for the responsible parties for stormwater maintenance. It is recommend that the roster is completed and filed for future reference to aid in maintaining an adequate program. Stormwater data sheets have been included to assist in record-keeping of stormwater events and required maintenance of the drainage system. So, to me, that's a red flag. If we're going to try to, if they've incorporated a roster to maintain who's responsible, who's going to be looking at that? A regular homeowner isn't normally going to maintain that.
Excuse me, I do believe that's during construction of the homes. The contractor on site when excavation is supposed to report the daily activity on the site. I believe that extends into the highway.
Well, I looked at the plans, and there's definitely a differentiation between construction and erosion control sentiments, and then it does go on, however, to include sheets for regular maintenance, so for example, inspections after a major stormwater event, inspections after every spring, the roadways and the driveways have to be swept, a bottom inspection and removal of sediment if the basin is over two inches. So, who's going to be responsible for that? And I took that section of the plan to indicate that there would be a roster to keep, to maintain who would be responsible.
I will look into that, because I agree with you, that's very complicated.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Chair.
As a normal stormwater, where the contractor has to keep a ledger of each day, rainfall, everything during construction, and I understand what I'm coming from, it sounds like it's being passed on to the homeowner. I want to check into that, because that's not a very, it's not a marketable item.
Mr. Brenner.
I just wanted to note, we were talking about lots 2 and 4 being completely separate from Lot 3. In terms of stormwater, I'm not 100% sure that's the case. Again, I don't read these plans professionally, but again, that, the HDPE pipe seems to have one end buried pretty squarely in Lot 3.
Yeah. Well, and I guess our point there was that Lot 3's water isn't leaving Lot 3, they're accepting the runoff, the overflow from Lot 2 and 4, but, so the two primary issues that I see, and I'm just trying to summarize this for Mr. Coyview, so you have a good understanding of what needs to be addressed to move this project forward. One is the drainage easement, and two is the ongoing maintenance, whether that's a homeowners association or some other vehicle that ensures that there's a mechanism to maintain these structures. My personal take on things would be that I would encourage you to take a look at lots 2 and 4 and see if there's any way to separate the stormwater structures for those two lots, so that each lot is responsible for their own stormwater. That would put things in a position where a homeowners association wasn't as critical, seeing as how lots 3 and 5, for the most part, are dealing with their own stormwater. My take would be that that's a much cleaner way of dealing with things.
I do agree with that. Is there a way you could scroll this down a little bit, so I can see that retention between 2 and 4, or that area you're talking about? I just want to familiarize myself.
So, if you look at lots 2 and 4, as they enter off of Mulpus Road, going down the driveways...
Right, I can't see that part, I'm sorry.
There's a couple of 12-inch pipes that cross from one lot to the other, and then the primary issue is recharge area number 3, that sits between those two houses, is shared across the lot lines.
I see that now, yes.
So, if there's a way to untangle that, so that Lot 2 deals with their own stormwater, and Lot 4 deals with theirs, I think it would just make things a lot cleaner.
Yes, I agree.
So, another comment, another comment is, this is the low-impact development that we've been pushing for, as far as I can tell. This is, this is very limited amount of structures, and mostly trying to control the surface flows and recharge, so on that, on that point, kudos to you for the design, I like that, but it does look like the, so the recharge area that we're talking about between lots 2 and 4, I don't see any pipes going into it, and I do see a berm around it, so I'm not sure how the water gets into it.
You're referring on the driveway?
I'm sorry?
Are you referring to the area near on the driveway?
No, the proposed stormwater recharge area number 3.
I can't see that on this plan. Is that up by the house on Lot 2?
Nope.
It's the one between 2 and 4, the one that's in the center of the screen right there.
Unfortunately, you have to scroll down a little bit for me to see that, I'm sorry. But I think I know exactly what you're talking about. I don't know if that's just the retention area, and, because there is a pipe, it looks like there's one on 2, then goes, there's a red line anyway, and this is so tiny, I can't really see it that well, and it looks like it goes from that, I'm losing it, from, it's getting better, it does show a pipe from that retention into the long one between the two, and then discharges onto Lot 3, and I've lost it again, I don't see it yet.
He's talking about this one here, the stormwater recharge area.
Okay.
It has a bottom, what am I, row 6?
Number 3, okay, that's why I asked up by the house on Lot 2, I'm sorry. I don't see a pipe coming in, but I thought that that would just be runoff because of the elevations of the lot, everything kind of runs into that area. There's, everything, as melting snow, everything goes to that area, is graded to it. So, you have your natural flow into it, but then it looks like we have a spill area coming out. I'm just reading the same thing you are, I'm sorry if I'm not clear, but that's what I see.
It sounds like his engineers need to...
Yes.
Look at this, and it'd probably be helpful if they were here to answer some of these questions.
Yes, they would have been.
And it'd be helpful to get clarification in terms of the areas that are paved, is that pavement directed at a catch basin, is it just sloping off into the recharge area? The other concern would be the roof water coming off the roof, is that being directed into that recharge area, just so we have a clear understanding, but I think...
Sure, I understand that, because it doesn't look like it is on this plan.
Yep. So, but I would encourage you to take a good look at the stormwater concerns between lots 2 and 4, and see if there's a way to make sure that those lots are responsible for their stormwater individually, so that you could avoid a situation where you need a homeowners association and grading easements or drainage easements and so on.
I agree.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Bertram.
Looking at the, I, the applicant was talking and made reference to the fact that this is for construction, I went back through the plan, and it does appear they are strictly focused on construction, and in Section E on Page 11 of the plan, it talks about termination of permit coverage, and basically that after construction, under the general permit, it will terminate the contractor's responsibility regarding the stormwater protection plan. My question would be, what happens after the contractor completes that termination of permit coverage? Then what happens for maintenance of the, of the stormwater structures? And I'm not seeing anything in the plan that talks about that, so I would like to have clarification from the engineer, what's going to be required from the homeowner after this is terminated by the contractor.
And I agree with that. And I agree with that.
Mr. Bernie, could you share the standard conditions that we've gone through for stormwater?
We can try.
Okay.
Mr. Coyview, we've been working on standard conditions for these type of projects, and I'm just asking Mr. Bernie to share those with you so that you're up to speed because they will.
Oh, I mean, yeah, I can email them to him tomorrow. I thought I meant to share them on the screen.
Yeah, no, it just, at some point, if you can share those. With Mr. Coyview, and that way he's aware of those conditions, and we can incorporate them moving forward, so.
Exactly. I thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the board? All right. Uh, when would you like to continue the hearing to Mr. Coyview? September 13th or September 27th or?
The 13th is, uh, is, I've had this property for almost a year now, and I've been working on the stormwater, because I didn't realize this was a, a, a lot, for quite a while. So I do want to move this along. I want to get this corrected and to your standards, and I can move on. So I would like the earliest possible.
Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to, to continue to September 13th at 6:35.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Oops, second.
All those in favor and of continuing the hearing for 97 Cross Street, 125 Cross Street, 430 Mulpus Road, and 440 Mulpus Road. Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
An aye for myself. Thank you, Mr. Coyview.
I thank you so much. I will see you then.
Excellent.
I will be in contact with Mr. Bernie tomorrow.
Our next appointment is for 1263 Reservoir Road and 435 Lemmonster Shirley Road, also known as 535 Lemmonster Shirley Road, which I believe we need to read the announcement for this as well, because this was on our.
There is secret data.
I think this is it. There you go, Matt. You're up.
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on August 9th, 2021, 6:35 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review applications for site plan approval and stormwater management permit under chapters 250, section 8.4, and chapter 204, respectively of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg, for construction of a 372,000 square foot warehouse and distribution building off Lemmonster Shirley Road at 1263 Reservoir Road, map 142, parcel 0006. Owner, Paul Keating, heirs care of Mary Coburn et al., 998 Reservoir Road, Lunenburg, Mass. 01462, and 435 Lemmonster Shirley Road rear, map 143, parcel 0007. Owner, JNA Realty Trust, Daniel L. McNiff, trustee, 280 Great Road, Shirley, Mass. 01464. Applicant is JMC slash TBG Lunenburg LLC, 100 Grandview Road, Suite 203, Braintree, Mass. 02184. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office at 960 Mass Ave, Lunenburg.
I appreciate you having to.
Thank you, Matt. Sure thing.
Good evening. For the record, Bill Hannigan with Hannigan Engineering.
Good evening.
We prepared a, uh, a little slideshow to kind of walk through the process that we've been through with this project. Up on the board in the back now. First off, I wanted to just introduce the, the project team. Um, the last meeting we were at, Peter Mahoney was here from JMC, which is James, which is John Cochrane.
John Cochrane.
Yeah, John Cochrane Company. And with me tonight are Tim and John Brennan from the Brennan Group. Um, also with me is Heather Monacup from Freeman Peterson. She's our traffic consultant. And we also have, um, via Zoom, Jason Grant from Arco, who is the design-build company that will be building the project, and Brandon Conforti from GMA Architects. Uh, they're the architectural firm that put together the building plans. So, uh, what we wanted to do was kind of run through, uh, project overview, the current use and conditions of the land, where it is, some site photos, and kind of go through where we, where we started with the whole project as far as our, uh, as far as the project goes relative to the, the construction that we're proposing. Uh, the property, if you can go to the, I guess the fourth or fifth slot side, Adam, the approximate site location slide, right there. All right. So the property is located, um, just to the east of the, um, of Reservoir Road. It's a portion of the current, um, processing plant that is operated by PJ Keating Company. Just to the, to the right of that, between Lafarge and the general operating plant, plant is an open area of land, approximately 33 acres that we're looking at developing, a, a building of 372,000 square feet. Um, the build, the site location is a historic mining operation that goes back to the seventies, if not further, where a lot of the material was pulled out, harvested, sold, and other raw materials. As the material processing continued, ended up being backfilled into the site. The good news is that most of that material was either, either gravel or rock, uh, stone, stone dust, and stuff like that. So no, no materials that would be, would be of a, of a, of a concern relative to 21 East, stuff like that. The proposed use is a distribution facility, which is allowed by right subject to this site plan approval. Um, also, we're here for a stormwater management permit, uh, relative to stormwater operations on the project. Um, the property is, is bordered, as I said, to PJ Keating on the east, Lafarge Concrete Processing on the, I'm sorry, on the, on the west is where Keating is. Lafarge is on, on the east, and the MBTA is, uh, on the north, and Lemmonster Shirley, uh, Road is, is at the bottom of the, of the site. So a closer view of the, the slide showing the approximate site, you can kind of see the configuration of the land that we're looking at creating, uh, for this, um, project. The property lines have not been finalized with an A and R plan. We'll be actually submitting that plan this week to the board to create the lot, uh, for this project. There were some, some things we needed to go through on the site plan level to make sure that the, the lot lines, uh, worked and that all the work that we're proposing is within the site plans. Um, this piece of land is stated as a vacant piece of land. It's not really being utilized by the PJ Keating Companies anymore for, for their operations. Um, the majority of the topsoil and gravel has been removed. Um, and then there's some, some current site conditions photos that we've, the first one is the access drive, um, as you come into the site off Lemmonster Shirley Road, and the second one is being on the site, uh, looking to the west at, at the current, uh, processing operations. If we could go, Adam, to the, to the site rendering plan. So, building is generally going to run, um, in a north-south direction with the, uh, the main access drive is on the east side. Uh, the, there's a truck loop that will circle the building in a counterclockwise fashion. It's a little bit more, a little difficult to see on this, but we'll get it, we'll get a better view of it as we get into it. Um, the trucks will loop around the back, and the actual loading dock areas will be on the, uh, west side of the building. Um, there is adequate space for more than 70, um, loading bays. Uh, some of them are at grade, um, and that, that number is changing as we get into the building design, and the final number will be determined when we get the full construction set for the, for the structural engineering package done. On the east side, if we go to the next slide, Adam, please, the, the main entrance area is shown, um, on the, on the east side, as I stated. And what we've done is we've separated the, the car-truck traffic from the, um, truck traffic immediately as you come in the site. You, the, all the employees would come into the site and turn, uh, left into the main parking lot, which would be in the front of the building as, as well as along the, the east side of the building. There's a separation of about a 10-foot landscape strip between the, um, the truck travel route and where the parking would be for the employees. If we jump to the next slide, and we'll just continue around the building. Um, so this brings you further down the driveway. You can see there's still a separation between the two, and then if we go to the next one, you can see that the, the loop road continues around, uh, the back, separating itself from the parking areas that are, uh, intended for, uh, employees of the site. So the, the general idea is to keep the truck traffic and the passenger vehicle traffic separated on the project. Um, this will be a, a one-way in a counterclockwise direction. So now if we continue on to the west side of the project, the trucks would then come back down on the west side, heading, heading south. We can go back, uh, the planes in reverse. Um, and you can see on the, on the, immediately adjacent to the west side of the building is where the loading docks would be. Uh, there's a concrete pad that would be built, uh, to support those, those trailers and those trucks in that area. On the opposite side of the driveway, there's going to be a trailer storage area. You can see that there's another row of concrete, uh, which is where the, uh, the feet for those trailers that are being stored in that area. Those would typically be empty trailers in that area. Uh, those would be stored. And on the north side of the property, there's actually additional room for, um, additional trailer storage of about 75 more trailers up in that area there. Uh, the total parking on the property is, uh, 402 spaces is what we're, we're showing. Um, we base that on the newly approved, um, parking calculations that were approved at town meeting this past March, I believe, May?
May.
Um, so that calculation comes up with 102 spaces, uh, based upon the square footage of the building. Based upon experience of, of our client with this type of facility, they're figuring that they're going to need a lot more spaces than that. Um, the, the average, what they're looking at for a, a, a single shift, uh, largest shift would be about 250, um, employees, uh, with overnight shifts that could be in the 75 to 100 range. So that's where we came up with the, the number of about 400 spaces on the property. Thinking we're probably going to need at least 375. If we get into multiple tenants, sometimes you can get more employees, um, with, with more tenants, because you have overlap of administrative staff and, and the like within three different, two or three different, um, business platforms. So that's why we've, we've landed at the 402 number. Um, 402 just came up because that's the, the final number. When we're trying to get around 400, that's where we ended up. Um, so the, the parking on the property is, meets the standards. The site layout, uh, meets the standards with respect to driveway aisles, parking space requirements, sidewalk requirements, handicap accessibility requirements with respect to the number of spaces you need, uh, for the parking. Um, so all those elements are, are worked within, um, the project, uh, footprint on the site. Um, as part of, as part of this, um, there are stormwater management items that we have to adhere to. Um, so one of the things that we need to do is do 90% TSS removal of the stormwater from all the curvaceous areas in the property. We meet that standard with our drainage calculations. Um, in addition, we, we have to also, uh, provide phosphorus retention, um, of 60%, and we meet that with our, our, um, design as well. All that information is within the drainage analysis report, which has been reviewed by Graves, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Um, part of the other, um, aspect of the project is relative to operation and maintenance, and, and here when you talk about that prior to this meeting, um, that's, that's a, a, a document that in this particular case during construction will be handled by the, the site contractor, overseen by the owner. And then from there, during, uh, after you go through the construction phase and gets turned over to the owner in full, uh, all the operation and maintenance would be required to be performed by the owner of the property. Uh, the tenants, um, would, who are leasing the property would basically be backcharged that, uh, those fees relative to what, however they work that within their lease agreement. Okay, so that, that all is, is worked into the, um, the plan as a, as a, a mechanism to make sure that the, uh, operation and maintenance is funded during the process. Um, as we are, if we can go to the, the next slide, uh, to show the rendering of the building. So the building layout, um, was taken and then handed over to the, the architect, who then took the building, the general building design. This actually is the same picture that's shown on the actual, uh, front cover of the, of the site plans. Uh, so, so the, the site basically is intended to be landscaped, uh, out to the street, provide a, a, an aesthetically pleasing look, um, to the building, um, which is going to be, you know, enhanced, was really going to enhance the area. Uh, right now, if you go down there, there's a lot of debris, a lot of, uh, scrub growth material because of the fact that the area was harvested so much that whatever could grow afterwards is what grew. Uh, we're going to do an extensive landscape planting plan, um, which is incorporated within the subdivision, oh, sorry, within the site plans that we've, we've submitted. So there's, the next rendering shows it from a different perspective. Uh, this shows some of the, uh, the, where the trucks would be parked and, and how the vehicles would be situated on the property, just from a perspective, uh, review on the project. Um, the next part of the project that was reviewed was relative to traffic. Uh, Freeman Peterson, uh, did the traffic review on the property. Um, and as a result of their review, which included, um, uh, taking traffic counts at various locations, um, in the intersections within the area, specifically the main one that they were looking at was the intersection of Fort Pond Road and Lemmonster Shirley Road, uh, where that is an extreme, um, it's very wide, as you know. Um, there's a lot of truck traffic that's existing in that area because of the fact that you have, uh, a lot of truck companies in the area. You have Keating running through all that area with both their concrete and their paving. You have the vendors that go to Keating to buy concrete and pavement and then move, move that material around. You have Powellstone and Gravel, um, and, and a few other, um, wood-sized companies in the area that do a lot of truck traffic already. So what was reviewed was basically an analysis, and this is all part of the, um, traffic submittal that was submitted as part of the package. Uh, but the, the, um, the amount of trucks that were going to be generated by this facility and the amount of passenger vehicles that will be, going to be generated by this facility, both in a peak hour basis as well as in a daily basis, is what reviewed as part of the traffic study within this, um, within this project. And what was, what was found was that the, uh, the impacts were, were, uh, enough to warrant, um, the inclusion of a left-turn lane into the project heading, um, from the west to the east, heading towards the Shirley Line. So if you look at the site plans, um, as you're, you're heading west, you take, if you came from Route 2, you turn right onto Lemmonster Shirley Road, you go past Keating, and you start going down the hill. Um, as you get to the bottom of the hill, there would be, the roadway pavement would be widened in that area, and there'd be provisions for a, a dedicated left-turn lane to come into the property. Um, so that is one of the reasons where we started to get the easterly entrance to the project as one way in, and the westerly exit from the property as one way out. So there's a completely circular, circular, uh, direction of flow, uh, for all the traffic. Um, there's sufficient room, um, to put that, um, third lane in there, if you will, so there will be a, a pass-through lane, uh, which would go on the south side of the road. That pretty much stays where it is right now, and we'd be basically building over to the north as we're heading in that area to create that left-turn lane, and then shifting the eastbound, I'm sorry, the westbound lane, um, coming from Shirley, a, a little bit closer to our property. Uh, we have had, um, this has been peer-reviewed already by Walsh, by, uh, I'm sorry, by Graves Engineering, Jeff Walsh, and we've had a, a, a meeting with him, as well as Rob Oliver, uh, from the DPW, to go over all of these different things, including the final, um, design changes that we may be making to the plans. So what we're here tonight to, to do, we, we missed the last meeting, um, so what we're here tonight to do is to give you the presentation that we just did now, go through the elements of the project, um, to try to get the board up to speed with where we, where we are. And then from there, we're hopeful to be able to complete the review process with both Graves Engineering and, um, the DPW to, to make sure that everything is, is all set. And there'll be another set of plans coming, um, for you for the next meeting. Um, so I think, I, I know that there are, um, various impacts that we've reviewed relative to, um, the fiscal impacts of the project. Um, and that's included in the impact, um, letter, a portion of the, of the submittal. Um, there's a, obviously, when you take a vacant piece of land and you put a 372,000 square foot building on it, the tax revenue to the town is, is significant, and we think that's a, a beneficial, um, element to the project. Uh, we're projecting upwards of 150 construction jobs to be, um, created as a part of this project, and at the end, um, approximately 325 new full-time permanent jobs, uh, within the facility. and at the end approximately 325 new full-time permanent jobs within the facility for the project. The secondary benefit to this is that those people who are employed during the construction phase obviously will need a place to get gas, get something to eat, and maybe they'll learn a little bit about the town as they're here. And those who are here for the permanent jobs, most will be working within the same area and they'll be basically the secondary spinoff benefit to most towns and communities when you have a project like this, is that they start coming to the local restaurants and using the local businesses. And so there's a spinoff effect of that. So that's a fiscal benefit to the town as well. Since it is non-residential, obviously, there's not going to be a real impact to schools and it's really not anticipated there's going to be a significant impact to public services such as police and fire. This project happens to be next to one of the largest producing water wells, probably in the state. This water system that is, that the town, or the, sorry, the Lunenburg Water District has across the street, has a phenomenal amount of water to where if there were an event there, the sprinkler system would probably knock down anything before the fire department even got to the site. So it's, there's a lot of water there, which is kind of interesting. I think that that's it on those items. It's in the industrial district, Office Park Industrial District of town of Lunenburg. The distribution's allowed by Wright. We have site plan review as well as stormwater management and we're hopeful that we can work through this project and gain your approval and start construction as soon as possible. But we know you have to do your job. Any questions at this point?
Well, we'll open it up to the board for any questions.
Well, I have a few.
Go ahead.
There's no sewer down there, right?
Correct.
So how big of a septic system are you going to have for the?
Big. It's good, yeah. We have, we've already done all the soil testing. There's adequate room for a new septic system on the property. It will be a, I want to say the number's around 7,000 gallons a day and that. So it won't need to be a treatment plant, but it will be a pressure dosing system or an innovative alternative system that is compliant with DEP and Title V, et cetera.
So is this the 30-acre parcel or the 300-acre parcel? It's probably a 30.
This is a 33-acre parcel.
I'm sorry?
A 33-acre?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it took me a little while to figure out where it was.
Yeah. Well, and quite frankly, that's why we threw the address of 535 Lummester Shirley Road on it, because if you put the address of 1263 Lunenburg Road, I'm sorry, Reservoir Road, you'd go down a reservoir road and you'd say, well, where is it? So we did that on purpose almost to try to get everybody to know kind of where it was. We also have, just a point of interest is that we have talked to the building department and they've then talked to the fire department about the address. The address actually 535 doesn't work. So it's going to end, we believe it's going to end up being 475 Lummester Shirley Road, but we're waiting for the assessors office to confirm that they're okay with that address. When you get the next set of plans, we're going to have the address changed to reflect what the building department wants for the address so that these documents, when they're floating around town, are associated with the correct property.
Okay, thank you. So you've been at the intersection of Lummester Shirley and Reservoir Road, right?
Yes.
So?
That was reviewed as well, yeah.
So how many, how many of these 634 daily trip, vehicle trips do you think are going to be going towards Shirley?
With that, I would like to introduce you to Heather Montecup from Greeman Peterson, our traffic consultant.
Well, before we go that route, let's see if there's any other comments that you would like to address, Mr. Hanigan, and then we can get into the traffic data.
I don't have any at this time, no.
Any questions, Mrs. Bertram? She's muted, so I don't know that.
I'll be here for questions if you have them.
Have you received the comments from the Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because they did make a comment about the septic system being under the pavement.
Yep.
And I think that was my only comment, so.
Yeah. And like I said, we've, Jeff Walsh had, I think, 29 or 30 comments that we've basically been working through with him and with Rob. Rob had his, Rob Oliver had his comments. We've, so we have a comment response letter coming that breaks down all the different departmental comments that we have so that they're all in one letter and that we can address with the next set of plans.
Okay. Let's dig into traffic data.
For the record, I am Heather Monacup with Greeman Peterson and we did prepare the traffic documents for this proposal before you tonight. So when we looked at this project, we looked at both employee vehicles, so passenger cars, SUVs, things like that, and tractor trailer trucks. It was assumed that, to answer your question specifically, Reservoir Road, we assume that 20% of the employee vehicle, employee trips would come to and from Reservoir Road. How we based that number was on journey to work data. So what we did was we took everybody's census data for the last 10 years, whatever that, work in Lunenburg, where do they live? And that's how we come up with that number. So we have like 40% of the traffic to and from the west on Lummester Shirley Road, 10% to and from the east on Lummester Shirley Road, 20% to the north on Reservoir Road and the remaining to the south using Fort Pond Road. So specifically, it was 20%. So that equates to 13 vehicle trips, both during the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour on Reservoir Road.
I'm sorry, Lummester Shirley Road is Route 70, is that correct?
No.
No, it's not.
No, Fort Pond Road is Route 70, right?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
So, and anybody going Fort Pond Road would still be on Lummester Shirley Road? Would be part of that?
It would, correct. So between Fort Pond Road and our site driveways is the biggest increase in traffic, for sure. Then as you head west, some traffic goes straight towards Lummester and whatever else and south during, south on Fort Pond Road. So that's where the split is. So when I say 40%, it's 40% beyond Fort Pond Road.
Okay. My question primarily was concerned for the intersection there.
The intersection itself, it is different. Not going to lie about that.
Yeah, that's a nice way of putting it.
We don't anticipate our truck traffic using that. I mean, there's the bridge just beyond it, like, you know, our tractor trailers are expected to use Route 2. That's kind of, we put 100% of our traffic, assuming that's the way that it would go to and from the west using Fort Pond Road. So, but obviously, there's definitely traffic on that road, so employees are going to come that way, you know?
So, did you say one, the first part, you said that they're not going to use that? And then the next part, you said they're going to come from?
No, employee, I expect employees to use Reservoir Road for sure. I don't expect our truck traffic to be turning right and right onto Reservoir Road or left off of Reservoir.
I'm not concerned about, my concern is the people that are traveling west towards Shirley that are trying to take the left onto Reservoir Road and they can't see the vehicles coming around the corner. It's already a horrendous mess.
And we're not adding any traffic to that left turn movement onto it. We would just be adding the left turns off of it, I guess.
You're coming through here and that limits?
And we're coming through, correct, yeah.
So your concern is the increase in truck traffic from this site?
Coming around the blind corner.
To Fort Pond Road to get to Route 2.
So on the main road, yeah.
Folks traveling south on Reservoir Road to go east to Shirley and points beyond.
Right, so we did, we did count that intersection. We, when we analyzed it, we assumed even though traffic goes both ways on both, it's a two-point intersection, right? Reservoir Road, the way it meets, it meets Lummester Shirley Road in two positions and cars go in and out of both roadways, right? So we looked at it, when we analyzed it, we analyzed it as one roadway with all the traffic using one, which is a worst case because we've assumed all the traffic meets at one point and we still don't decrease the level of service with the impact of our project or the additional traffic from our project.
I find that very hard to believe with 634 trips, but?
That's daily trips.
Anyways, I mean, even today, right now, as it exists, you go up there and look at the road, there are strips everywhere where people have blocked up their brakes. People, you start and you have to slam on your brakes because you see somebody coming around the corner higher than the speed limit, which is probably, what, 30 there?
Top 40, right, on Lummester Shirley Road.
I don't know, I just, I just, I understand the traffic calculations and whatnot, but I think it just is a safety issue. And believe me, I've been looking for projects like this to come to Lunenburg and I just didn't see any way they would because there's no sewer down there. The infrastructure is very difficult. But I just, I don't, I would expect that 90% of your trucks are going to be going to Route 2, the past Reservoir Road in both directions.
And we've assumed 100% do that.
Okay, yeah.
In our analysis.
Right, I didn't want to say 100, but.
So your concern is the level of service, it's site distance.
My concern is safety, right.
And your concern is the existing condition of it and we're adding more traffic to it. It's not, yeah.
Well, I mean, there's multiple opportunities. I don't know if you're going to just tend to leave it as it was or if there was going to be any kind of improvement, like a signal or widening or?
Unlikely it would meet the warrants for a signal. Honestly, we haven't checked that because we were only adding 13 peak hour trips to that intersection, both rights, rights onto Lummester Road and lefts, I'm sorry, rights onto Reservoir Road and lefts off of Reservoir Road. So we, you know, the amount of traffic that we're adding doesn't quite justify an intersection redesign, which is why we didn't really propose anything. But I can completely, as I mentioned, the intersection is different, so I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. I think it's needed somewhere, like a long time before this.
Yeah. Just to add to that, one other thing, and we talked about this today as part of our discussions with DPW and Jeff Walsh. One of the questions that they asked was relative to the, you know, how many trips during the peak hour. And in this stretch, the AM peak and the PM peak in both directions experiences one, basically one additional car per minute. Okay, so if you think about it that way, you can, and that's the peak hour.
Per minute?
Per minute, one car per minute. So, which is not, which is not a lot, okay? If you drive out there, which you've obviously been to the site, if you drive out there and you sit there and you see the number of cars going by, we're adding one more car to that, to that traffic flow, if you will.
East or westbound?
East or west, yeah.
It's not.
East and westbound?
Yeah.
Not east and west, in total.
Yeah.
In total, you would, if you were sitting out there, you'd see about one more trip a minute.
Going in front of you.
Depending on what direction they're traveling in and out.
Okay, because Rob brought up the same question. Okay, not so much about that intersection, but about the amount of traffic going through that area. Okay, so we did, we did take another look at that specifically today relative to that whole question. So we're cognizant of that intersection. As Heather put it, it's an interesting intersection. We would never propose to design something like that coming in front of this board, but it is what it is. It's something that's just right now.
Thank you. We wouldn't like to see it approved, right? I mean, from my perspective, I share Mr. Allison's concern and I think just to put it in slightly different terms, I think his concern, if I'm understanding it correctly, isn't necessarily the amount of trips coming on or off of Reservoir Road, but simply the amount of vehicles traveling westbound or eastbound past that intersection adding to a situation that's already bad.
And that's the, that's the one per minute that we're talking about, east and west?
Yeah. And to add to that a little bit, I mean, a distribution facility with storage for 75 trailers, you're going to have 53-foot trailers going through that intersection. This isn't a triaxle leaving Keating's with load of stone. This is a vehicle that's twice as long. And that intersection in particular is extremely narrow, so you put longer vehicles in tighter corners and things get really snug. If you travel eastbound on Lummester Shirley Road, that berm is like three feet tall. You can take your mirror off on the shoulder of that road. There is no shoulder, there is no breakdown lane, there is no guardrail. And so it just, and again, this isn't any of your doing, it's just, it's a really difficult intersection and when you talk about a project of this size, it's something to be concerned about and at least discuss and try to find ways to mitigate the impacts as much as possible. The grade doesn't help us down there either.
Hell.
You know, and there's been a lot of development in that area. You know, Keating's is doing more and more business and we recently reviewed a project that's taking over a vacant site just down the road from there. The gas station, Pioneer Park, I mean, that whole area's come a long way in the last five to 10 years, so. And I don't even know if those lanes that come off of Reservoir Road, especially the one, if you come off of Reservoir to turn left, I don't know that that lane on the left-hand side qualifies for two vehicles passing.
It's definitely tight, but people do it. I saw it.
I felt like I was doing the wrong thing.
Yeah, certainly.
Just a stop sign, it must be.
Yeah, especially if you're in a small vehicle and you're sitting on that hill and you're staring down, you know, a triaxle or a tractor trailer, you feel like you're going to get squashed. So, any other concerns that don't relate to that particular intersection?
Interesting intersection.
Mrs. Bertram, do you have anything to add to the conversation?
I don't. I have the same concerns you did relative to the Board of Health comments. Also, I noticed that the fire department had some comments relative to the hydrants, but I understand from Mr. Hanigan that the next round of plans will address all of those comments.
Yeah, his comments, if I, just to follow up on that, his comments were really about the location of the hydrants around the property and what's been done in the next iteration of the plans. We've moved one of the hydrants to be within 100 feet of the, of the connection point of the building, so that's been addressed. Along with, I believe, peer reviews that he wants to have done, which is all part of the building permit process.
And is this still a spec build?
Any other comments from the board? Nobody has their hand raised?
Nope.
All right. Well, with that, we will entertain a motion to continue to September 13th.
Yes, please.
At 6:35 PM.
So moved, seconded.
All those in favor of continuing the public hearing for 535 Lummester Shirley Road? Roll call, vote, Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doing our best. Our next appointment is for 360 Flat Hill Road, the Scenic Road hearing, which is continued from July 12th.
Yeah.
And? Well, I guess we'll do Scenic Road and then do Stormwater.
Do we need to read the opening for Stormwater?
No, if we're going to do Scenic Road first, we can just do that.
I figured we'd just do the Scenic Road because it's already been opened.
Okay, so we haven't opened the Stormwater.
Yeah, and get that squared away and then we'll move forward to the Stormwater. Is Mr. Mattson? Excellent. So this is a continuation of the Scenic Road hearing from July 12th and we had a site visit shortly thereafter and discussed the trees that needed to come down as part of this project. Mr. Mattson, do you have anything you'd like to go over with us?
Just wanted to mention that I do have Mark Elbagmire, engineer, on tonight, too. Is that heard?
I can hear you, Ken. Yep, this is Mark.
So, any comments?
If it's your wishes, we did, sorry.
No, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, so we did a...
Yeah, so we did a supplemental submission with just some minor revisions and a few additional additions to the plan, but it's largely very similar to what was originally filed.
So when we did the site visit, we explored the possibility of shifting the driveway for Lot 1 away from that large, I believe it's oak tree, that's within the jurisdiction of the Scenic Road. It doesn't need to be removed, but due to the proximity of the driveway, we were concerned about the long-term health of that tree. And the other thing we were concerned about was where the utility connections were gonna be run for these lots, primarily lots 1 and 2. And I don't know if anything's changed. It appears as though the lot, the driveway for Lot 1 is in the same location as it was originally proposed.
I don't know, Mark. We did submit a, we did submit a plan with that Lot 1 driveway shifted. It just shifted slightly.
Okay.
The plan's dated July 29th, I believe.
Well, we have a plan dated August.
Well, it's dated July 29th. It was received.
Received, okay, August 17th, okay. Do you know how far from that tree the driveway sits as it's described on the plan?
Ken, do you want to take that one just because you were at the site visit? I'm not quite sure which tree is the tree.
The driveway is 10 feet off of that tree. I talked to some tree people and they said usually two times whatever the width of that tree is the diameter of it was. That tree is at the very maximum five feet, I think it's a little less than five feet. So I picked the number of 10 feet off the base of the tree to the edge of the driveway.
My question would be, was the comment that no less than the diameter of the tree or diameter of the overhead? Because that's typically what the root system mirrors is the overhead, the canopy, I believe.
Yeah, typically from my experience, you don't want to work inside the drip line of the tree. Unfortunately, in this situation, that tree is probably got a 50-foot spread on it. And so unless you move the driveway 25 feet away, you're, you're really gonna do a lot of damage to the root system on that tree. The other concern I had relative to that is there's a utility pole that isn't shown on the plan, but if the electrical service for the house runs to the pole that's just to the right of the driveway, then you're either gonna trench on both sides of that tree or you're gonna trench down one side and then swing across and run down the side of the road. And essentially, at that point, you've severed 50% of the roots of the tree. But that was my primary concern there. I don't know if anybody else has anything to add to it.
Well, we would be keeping that in, very much in consideration, the power, and it's too early to say for sure. We haven't had Unitel out to lay out poles and stuff, but my thought was if it worked out, we would possibly come off of the, put the first pole going in back for the shared driveway on Lot 2 and 3, and then coming off of that pole to the house, which is eliminated and digging out to that pole. It's out by the road. By looking at it, if we were to dig to that pole, we would be far more than 10 feet up to that pole. I mean, from that pole to the, digging from there to the base of that tree.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess we gotta take, and if it's gonna be the canopy of that tree, that tree is at least a 50-foot canopy, so you would be, if we're gonna try to stay with outside of that, that'd be, we would be taken out. There's not too many trees. Most of the trees, which we're leaving all we can, are on my property. If we move any further, we're gonna start to take out some other significant-sized trees that we wouldn't be removing on the driveway.
Another thing that came up on the sidewalk by, by Ann Abada was the, they're not utilizing an already open space, creating a new one and filling that one in?
Yeah, that was just due to where wetland, 100 foot off the wetlands come and where we have to have a reserve on our septic system, that we would not be able to use that entrance and be able to get into the house properly.
Well, I guess my thought at the time the comment was made was that you can put the driveway over the reserve now and if you need to use the reserve later, then at that time you could make the hole in the wall.
Well, you could take that up with Jim Griffey, because he's the one that told me we had to leave that open on that, so that's basically would be a walkout on that end and we wouldn't be able to put a garage on that end. Therefore, we put the garage up on the high side with the garage above instead of underneath. That's why we have the driveway where it's at.
Yeah, if you actually, if you look at the site plan, it's part of the Stormwater filing, that, that's Lot 5 and it is very, it is very tight because of the wetlands on that lot, so it's not open option there. And that, the powerway, if you will, is pretty much within the 100-foot buffer or very close to it once you get into the.
Driveways can go in the 100-foot buffer, can't they? They go to 30-foot.
It's not the, it wasn't the driveway, it's the future, with the reserve. Is what I guess, I'm, according to Jim Griffey, he pretty much stressed that I gotta make sure that we put that house in there so that we're not putting driveway for the house or whatever, where the reserve system has to go.
You can put a driveway over a system. I don't see why that would negate the possibility of using it as a reserve area if you needed it.
Yeah, I guess I, I also, I understand what you guys are saying, but I don't, I guess I don't see it as, we would be filling that, they're opening in with some, with a stone wall to match with what's there for a stone wall, and it would be a matter of short time, there would be no one that there ever was an opening there.
I guess my frustration is that we had a site visit and we aired out a couple of these concerns and I feel like the plan that's being presented is exactly what was presented before we had the site visit and discussed all of these options. And so I, I feel like we're not getting anywhere with some of this. And as far as Scenic Road applications go, you know, you've, you've got five lots coming in off of the Scenic Road and so that's, in this situation, four new openings, one being a common drive. And we're doing our best to make things move forward with you, but I feel like, you know, we made a comment about Lot 1 and that particular oak tree that we're discussing is a huge tree. It's right along the neighbor's property. It's one of the biggest in this section of Scenic Road. And I distinctly remember talking about shifting that driveway over so it falls between two other smaller trees and potentially moving the electric service. And I also recall discussing the not having another opening in the wall for Lot 5 and just using the existing opening that's been there for probably 100 years. But unfortunately, we have the same plan we had when we started.
Well, I'm really sorry that that's what you feel like, but I thought I had just sent Mark the details. I think Mark did what I said to do. I guess I was, I don't, I do not remember any direction on exactly how far I was supposed to be moving that driveway. So I did what I did, shifted it according to what I asked somebody about, what's the standard of where you would put a driveway against a tree, and that was what was kind of given to me. But that driveway has been shifted over from what it was. And I don't remember on that opening down there, I know we discussed it all, but I, my best knowledge, I don't remember it being stressed that we need to put the driveway through there. Just, I tried to explain it back then as to why we weren't using that opening. And at that time, we never discussed driving on the top of the beach, being able to drive on the reserve or that. So I guess I'm a little taken back at why all this came up now. I guess I could, I wasn't clear with Mark about explaining the pole situation up there and how we, there was talk, I believe, with you guys of possibly putting the pole in, coming off of a pole on, down on Lot 2 and put the, on the common driveway, the first pole in or something.
Is your plan to run the electric overhead for these lots?
Yee, wah. No, there'll be some, it'll be, it'll be overhead going down the shared driveways and then at the end, they'll be going underground. And then from the road, we'll be going underground from the poles that are existing poles for the houses. Other than on that Lot 1, that's the one that we're talking about now, is getting the power to that pole without damaging that tree. We went to the pole, the existing pole there. And that's the, what I'm saying, we could possibly come off of the first pole in going down the shared driveways.
It would be my preference that those locations are identified because if the electric is going underground, then that's going to be another break in the wall that needs to be put back. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but.
I share your disappointment about the discussion at the sidewalk versus the plan we've got. And, I mean, we couldn't even discern anything about one pole or another pole because there's no poles shown on this plan, which I believe the poles are in the right of way, right? So they probably should be shown as well.
It'd certainly be helpful.
I mean, not extending the existing water is a financial decision that we don't have anything to say about, but.
Mr. Mattson, would you be open to making some revisions to what's being proposed?
No, I'm not. No, and it's just that I, the first that we, I've been told we had to locate the poles out at the road. And I'm not for sure if my engineer ever had them located, so it's just cost me another trip out there with my surveyor to locate them all and put them on the plan.
Yeah.
And if I take it right, and you're concerned about, we gotta spell out that we're gonna go through the stone wall, get to the poles, and if they have to be repaired back, which would be just normal, repair them back. Concerning that pole on Lot 1, I just, I don't like to speak because I'm not far enough into this yet with the Unitel on their poles, going back to them other lots. That was why I offered that auction, which would work really well if we can make that work. We wouldn't even be going up to that one pole up on the upper end. But if we were to go to that pole, I would, no problem, no doubt on the plan, that we would make sure we looped away from it as far as we could. Stay on the, say the upper side, dig up onto the upper side and stay as, away from that tree as far as we can stay. That said, I don't know if Mark has anything to add, what his thoughts?
No, the only other thing I could say that if there is concern with trenching that tree is, you know, if you went back onto the property with one pole overhead, that could be an option. I don't know what Unitel, that would fly with Unitel, like you said, Ken, but I think it's something that needs to be probably chased down a bit further with the utility just to see what was the option.
Yeah, that could be an option. They would, we would just stick a riser pole back 20 feet or so off the pole that's there and go from there underground.
Well, and I'm, I don't want the board to seem like we're trying to be difficult here, but at the end of the day, if we approve a plan that doesn't detail the sort of minutia, then we really haven't given you any approval, right? So it's a scenic road, you need permission to remove the trees, and the understanding is that the stone wall is part of the scenic road. And so anytime you touch that, we need to look at it. And so in my opinion, each one of these lots, whatever they're gonna have, if it's gonna be overhead, then great, you can run your overhead and you don't disturb the wall and any trees that need to become, come down are most likely on your property at that point. But if you're gonna trench through the wall, then that really needs to be located reasonably on the plan so we can give you approval to do so.
I don't think that's a problem to do that. Whether I can get someone out there to locate the poles if they haven't been, I haven't, I don't believe they have been located. But to show that, once they're located, is no problem to show a line coming in and I guess some language on there that we will repair the stone wall.
Okay. So from a permitting standpoint, the scenic road really isn't holding the project up because you still have stormwater to get through. So I would ask that you take the feedback you've gotten this evening and take a look at the plan and try to flush out the details with how you're gonna run your utilities and how you can address some of these concerns and come back to us with a plan that hopefully addresses those issues to the extent possible.
Okay, I just, I want you to, so what is the board's position on that existing opening?
Well, my concern was on Lot 1. As we discussed at the site visit, if you look to the left side of the driveway, there's four large trees that are all on your property.
Yeah.
If you go in a southerly direction. If you go in a southerly direction down the road, there's two trees that are close by, and then there's a little bit of an opening and then another two trees. And we had discussed and I had pointed out that there's an opening there between the two trees, which would be on the right, and the two larger trees on the left, all of which are on your side of the wall. So they're in your jurisdiction, not ours. And shifting the driveway in that direction, ideally, it'd be nice to have it fall between those two pairs of trees to try to maintain the character of the road. But again, those trees fall on your property. So if you want to take one of them down, all of them down, that's, that's up to you. But at least it would shift the driveway away from that large oak tree, which is a scenic road tree. And then if you could detail how you're going to run your electric, if it's overhead, then it really has no impact on the project from a scenic road standpoint. But if you're, if in your discussions with Unitel, they want to run underground, then we need to reasonably locate where the poles are and how those trenches are going to be run.
I don't believe it's going to be Unitel. I don't, Unitel is probably fine with overhead. It's our own preference for this class of houses that we're going to be putting in there that you don't really like to run overhead wires across your yards into the houses. But I will get a hold of Unitel and talk about the different options we have, what we can do to eliminate having to dig up to that pole, that one pole. I guess it's, I never dreamed that we were going to have to slide that driveway down 50 feet or more and put a curve in it and stuff now in order to stay away from the base of that tree. And that's why it was shifted to what, we did shift it, but if we have to shift it more, then yeah, we got to take down some more trees on, on my side of the property in order to get the driveway in.
Yeah, I mean, to Ken's point, whether they're town trees or whether they're, you know, privately owned trees, we did kind of place these driveways where it would have the least amount of impact to trees overall. So, I mean, we could shift it southerly, but like Ken said, it may, it may impact more trees. So I guess just a little bit of guidance on that and we can, we can finalize that layout.
Well, my perspective was to shift it in a southerly direction and have it land between those two groupings of trees. There's four large, I believe they were all oak trees, but there's an opening between the two and you could reasonably put the driveway there. But again, all of those trees are outside our jurisdiction. So if you want to protect that one scenic tree by simply shifting the driveway, say 30 feet southerly, then.
Yeah, I just, I can't see the, I can see the one. Well, that was one of those we're showing that we were going to plant the tree because we were taking them down, but I see one, two, three, four trees right close to each other. And there's a fifth tree and then there's one that we say to be planted to replace one of the cut trees, which ultimately we, the trees we're cutting are all on our property.
I think you're talking about this opening between those two groups. So, so the four trees, then the fifth tree, then the planting tree. So he was, he was talking about the, the space between the two and four. One, two, space, three, four, five, and then planted tree.
Okay, well, there's just not, the opening going through there, yeah, we're going to, we're going to have to take down at least two of those bigger trees on my property from what I can see in order to.
As a board, we can only vote on what's presented to us. We, we keep driving for you. All we can do is provide feedback as to our interpretation of the bylaw and how we can make this work. In my opinion, cutting five lots in here, four driveways, is kind of a big ask. And we're trying to work with you and allow you to develop this property, which is well within your right. And in my opinion, these are pretty small modifications to make. It's not as if you're losing a lot here or going to be burdened by a lot of additional costs to shift a driveway 50 feet in one direction.
Okay, that's what we, you got that, Mark?
Yes, just to be clear, we're looking at putting it right where I have on this plan, tree to be planted to replace cut tree in that location?
No, if you look at the plan where the existing driveway is, there are two trees to the left side of the driveway. And then there's a small opening between the canopies as depicted on the plan. That's roughly where the driveway would land. Again, those four trees are not in the scenic road jurisdiction. Our jurisdiction stops at the stone wall. So if you feel like you need to take one of those trees down, take two trees down, take all four trees down, that's completely up to you. The tree we're trying to protect is on the right side of the driveway. So shifting the driveway south of that tree is the goal.
Yeah, I think that's a very easy change, you know, as long as everyone realizes that those may have to be cut. That's, that's, we can make that change easily.
Well, they're, they're going to have to be cut. And that's just to be clear that we want to be, is it 50 feet off of that tree going to be good or is it 60 feet? 10 what we have plus another 50?
Ken, how about, you know, center it right on those four trees and then maybe you can save the outer two?
Yeah?
If that works.
There you go.
And just to be clear that we can get something that works when we come back. Okay, that sounds.
And in terms of the other issue that Mr. Allison brought up relative to the existing break in the wall, I understand your concerns with Board of Health and recharge areas and so on. And, you know, maybe there's a way you use part of the break and patch part of the wall or change the driveway a little bit. I, I understand that situation is far more complicated because you have wetlands on the property and the location of the septic system and so on. But I'd appreciate it if you could at least take a look at it and see if something can be tweaked on that end.
Well, I don't, I guess I'm a little confused on where I would go with that. Only, I guess I'm being told that nothing says you can't put your driveway over the reserve system and.
Well, and I, I understand that, I certainly do. I know there's multiple boards involved in these type of projects between conservation and it's sometimes you get buried in the details of all the different regulations that apply to some of these situations. And scenic road isn't always the top of the list, so to speak. But I'm just asking that you take a look at it and see if that can be addressed because I know it was a concern of members of the board as well as the butter that lives across the street from this project.
Because what I'm thinking and Mark will speak up, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, so we can look at that, but that lot is very, very tight for a couple of reasons. Uh, we're limited on where we can put the septic system in a septic reserve because of the soil tuffing on site. And we also need to keep the rain garden and the stone infiltration trenches on the downstream side of the driveway. So if we use that, that cut, for one, I don't know if Board of Health would actually allow the reserve area to be within the driveway. And, uh, and two, it might be very hard to fit our stormwater controls on, on the lot. And we, we could take a look at it and inquire with the Board of Health agent, see if that would, would fly. I do understand that people put systems under driveways all the time, but I don't know that they would allow that for a reserve area to be under an existing driveway. So we'd have to dig into that a bit deeper.
Because my thing is I think if we moved down to that lower driveway, which I originally had kind of thought coming in someplace, we would go from a drive, we'd go to a drive under on that house instead of an above driveway. Just because if they come in, come in on that lower driveway with a driver boat, we'd have to come in, take a sharp right turn and go up the hill, then into the driveway, into the garage, right, I think, Mark, is that ready?
Yeah, with it, we would absolutely need a different house design if we were to use that, that cut. And you're probably right, a probably a drive under would be one of the few options that would fit.
All right. Well, as I said earlier, this isn't going to hold you up from a permitting standpoint because we still need to get through the stormwater permit process. So I think under the circumstances, the best bet is to continue this to our next meeting. We're going to have a long, long meeting on the 13th.
Well, I guess it would also depend on, excuse me, where the stormwater ends up. Because if the stormwater is going to be continued longer than that, then it makes more sense to do them together.
Yep.
It's not a super long letter, it's 12 comments, so maybe that can be turned around by the 13th.
Well, and we can always continue if we're not ready. So with that, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 360 Flathill Road, Scenic Road to September 13th at 6:35.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Mr. Brenner.
Aye.
Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent. Our next appointment is for the stormwater management permit for 360 Flathill Road.
And because it's a new hearing we're opening, I will read the DED. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on August 23rd, 2021, 6:35 PM via Zoom video conference to hear and review a stormwater management permit under the chapter 204 Stormwater and Storm Sewers of the Code of Town of Lunenburg for property located at 360 Flathill Road, map 087, parcel 0025, Lunenburg, Mass. Owner applicant is Mattson Homes 2, Inc., 129 Mason Road, New Ipswich, New Hampshire, 03071. The application and plans are available for viewing in the planning office at 10, there's no address there, 960 MAF?
Yep.
960 MAF.
Excellent. Mr. Elbag, would you like to walk us through this?
Yes, certainly, thank you. So this is the stormwater filing for eight lots of lots of single parent leases served by on-site well, with, with two common driveways built into the filing, so eight lots, six driveways. The general stormwater scheme here, that all the roof water will go into individual chambers. Driveway water will go into a rechar trench for treatment and infiltration. And downstream, there'll be rain gardens, most put on each lot to catch overflow from the driveway. Just to talk a little bit about it, it is a relatively high groundwater. A lot of the driveways are actually going to be mounded around a bit to get that penetration to work. We're hoping that, and we're not hoping, get everything onto each individual lot. So each individual property owner will have their own stormwater controls. As part of the stormwater filing, we included some educational materials that will be provided to each homeowner for the long-term care of their rain garden. We also tried to place the rain gardens in very visible locations right near the driveway entrances, you know, just to ensure that these things are highly visible and something that the homeowner will, you know, just to get the homeowner to, to maintain these things. If they're highly visible and not in the back of the map, we feel they have much better chance of some long-term care. That, that's the bulk of it. As you can see, we got Jeff Walsh about midday today. I did kind of skim through those and I think I should be able to address all those major problems. What if questions, we're here now and happy to hear from the board.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Sharon?
Yes, Mrs. Bertram?
I don't have any real questions. As noted in the, in the memo from Jeff Walsh, we need the operation and maintenance plan for the rain gardens. I applaud the use of the rain gardens, but my concern would be the maintenance associated with them and making sure that the homeowner is aware of that. So I would want a condition that that be, that the stormwater management plan be referenced on the deed as I expressed in some of the other hearings. But we need the maintenance plan for that. I did see the, the literature that was sent, but, but not an operation and maintenance plan.
We can, we can add that into the filing.
Any other?
I have a comment. I opened up the drainage report and I noticed the first thing that I saw was the two-year, the pre-development is lower than the post-development runoff. And that's not supposed to be?
Uh, yes, so with these storm accounts, all the storms are mitigated, just the two-year is very, very slightly higher. Narrative, the calc don't, don't really adequately account for some of the ponding behind the driveways. So in that local storm event, they're, those, those calculations are not quite accurate and the design is very conservative in that there will be a reduction in all storms. Just with a, when it's not a true subdivision, it's sheet flow basically across the site, it is hard to kind of capture everything you want to capture in that hydrocath calc. The two-year storm generally falters because I wanted to make sure that we had the mitigation for the higher intensity storms.
Can, Adam, can, can we point that out to the review engineer and have him confirm? Thank you.
So are the cultech chambers being used to do the runoff from the roof drains or the driveways as well? Are the driveways all paved?
Yeah, so the cultech chambers are going to take all roof water and only roof water. The driveways are proposed as paved. I don't know that, I don't know that the owner will pave all of the driveways in their entirety, but that's the most conservative way to model it for the stormwater. So in, in case Ken does want to pave all the driveways out there completely, it is modeled that way. And all the driveways are pitched to one side with filter fabric and an infiltration swale along the side to capture basically all the volume coming off the driveways. From there, that discharges to the downstream for the phosphorus production. From there, that discharges to the downstream for the phosphorus reduction.
Do those cultech chambers have any sort of structure to access them? In other words, is a manhole or something brought to the surface, inspection port?
Ah, yeah, there is a, they're placed in a stone envelope with a, basically like cleanup ports, inspection ports.
What was that answer?
He said there are inspection and cleanup ports.
Okay. Yes, sorry, I have an echo on my end, I don't know if you can hear me okay or not, but I do have a little bit of echo on my end. And the, the actual catalog cut from the manufacturer is within the, is included within the stormwater report, there's also a detail on the, on the plan.
Moving on there. Questions? We obviously have a few comments from the review engineer, so we're, again, need to wait for those to be addressed. I got nothing.
So as, as Paula mentioned, the, the rain gardens will probably need an operation and maintenance individual to the houses. And getting back to our age-old question, I don't know how enforcement is, is applied to those.
I think here it's slightly simpler, if each lot has its own facilities, then if there's no interplay between the lots, it's up to each individual homeowner to follow the operation and maintenance and conduct it annually.
Okay, so I guess, what brings up the question is, who's to say it is done?
Well, again, it goes back to the reporting that we're, we're talking about, which would be condition of the approval, which would need to be linked with, you know, the deeds in some way, and each individual homeowner would be required to know that this is expected of them.
I would completely agree, and as I said, with the other, with the other projects that we've talked about tonight, I think there needs to be a reference to the deed pointing back to that operation and maintenance plan, and then, you know, we've done everything we can to make the homeowner aware, and as inspections, et cetera, are supposed to occur in accordance with the operation and maintenance plan, we need to have some mechanism in the office to make sure that that's happening. But we haven't seen the plan, so I don't know what that entails yet.
Yeah, I don't think it's, the plan, there's some narrative on the plan, I don't think it's anything out of the ordinary, you know, basically cleaning around a couple of times a year, maybe inspecting them quarterly, and then a little bit less maintenance on the actual cultech, cultech chambers themselves, the big maintenance item is obviously the rain garden.
So at this point, I think we would need to continue this pending the changes from the Graves Engineering. We're gonna have a plan review, a revised plan based on those comments, so I think we just need to continue this at this point, correct?
Hmm, yep, that makes sense. Anything else that you would like to add, Mr. Mattson?
No, I don't have anything to add to this.
Okay.
So. I would like to make one comment, though, I just noticed it is, some of the places spell flat with two Ts and some of them spell it with one, it's only spelled with one T.
Yes, thank you, that's, that's been corrected.
Thank you.
Okay, so do you believe that the 13th will be sufficient for you to make the plan review revisions and, and to get it back?
I, I, I know they're busy down at Graves, but I certainly hope so, we'll do our best.
Okay, so I would make a motion to continue the hearing for 360 Flathill Road for stormwater to September 13th at 6:35 PM.
Just a minute, we have one public comment that we'd like to hear.
Oh, okay, okay.
Go ahead, Susan. You there? I can see her. Susan, did you want to make a public comment?
She muted.
She's muted. Oh.
Okay.
There you go. There you go.
Is that?
Susan, did you want to make a public comment?
Yes, yes, I would.
She's muted.
Can you, can you hear me now? Okay.
There you go, there you go.
Is that?
Did you want to make a public comment?
Yes, yes, I will. I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of echo, so it's not.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of feedback here, too.
Yes, yes, I will. I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of echo, so it's not.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of feedback here, too.
Yes, yes, I will. I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of echo.
These shows are unmuted now.
I'm sorry, Susan, we're having trouble hearing you. Seem to be having.
I wanted to comment on the fact that this.
Susan, we're having trouble hearing you.
Can you, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, but we're stuck with the loop somehow.
Comment on the fact that this.
Susan, we're having trouble hearing you.
Can you, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, but we're stuck with the loop somehow.
Susan, maybe you can type your comment in the, in the chat, if you go to the chat and type your comment.
But we're stuck with the loop somehow.
Maybe you can type your comment in the, in the chat, if you go to the chat and type your comment.
Interesting, just like that interception. That looks like.
Yes.
All the issues. Oh, it couldn't be, I mean, we had. I mean, well, no, I don't mean, in this particular instance, I think.
Seven eight one, ending in four eight one, you have your hand raised?
Yes. I have bought that property, and my big concern.
Identify yourself with your name and address, please.
Absolutely, my name is Glenn Logan, I live at Five Watch Street in Lunenburg, and my big concern is what you guys have been talking about, that you're talking about the drainage, and that you have to rely on the individuals in the houses to deal with it, and when they don't do that, that means it's all going to come down to our property. So there needs to be something done more than that, just to deal with that, because that's not correct. Did you receive that?
Yep.
Yes, yes. Really, Sharon, I can respond if you would like.
Yes, absolutely, I'm waiting to hear.
Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So, um, we do have a swell just to the, just along the, your back property line, and that swell is going to direct any excess stormwater flow to the sidelines on either side away from those properties. It's not there now, it's, it's a small, it's a swell, it's deconstructed.
So you can pretty much guarantee that there will not be any issues with the properties that are down below you, because we live down below your property line.
Correct, you live right on Watch Street, right?
That's correct.
So along the back property, along the back property line on those houses on Watch Street, one of which is yours, there's, on the applicant's property is going to be a stormwater swell, a portion of it is going to run east, and then a portion is going to run to the west. Yeah, it's going to, a small portion is going to run to the east, and it's going to run to the west, out to the frontage, either on Lot 6 or Lot 7, and essentially be directed around your property.
Okay, so you're saying that either way, the, the water will be runoff, either way, it will not have any effect on our property at all? Because the last thing I'm saying is, just knowing neighbors and so forth, that if you're going to rely on them to, you know, to divert their, their water off the property, that doesn't work.
Yeah, and most of what the homeowner is going to have to do is the operation and maintenance of mostly these stormwater treatment devices, so it's more so about the quality and less so about the quantity. So either way, these devices should function for quantity, you know, if they're not maintained properly, then the quality might be lacking, but e- either way, the stormwater will be directed around your property.
All right, thank you for your answer.
Thank you. Mrs. Whalen's concern is that the property was previously an apple orchard, and for many years pesticides have been used to cultivate and, you know, push off the, the bugs, and she's asking if those are going to be addressed in the stormwater regulations in any way.
Through the chair, no, we haven't done anything out of the ordinary here.
But has soil testing been done on the soil to determine if there is a, a, a large amount of pesticides?
Ken may know better, but not to my knowledge, ma'am.
I have had them out and looked at it, I have now went forward with the testing. We were going to test in a couple spots, Ian's, it's a fairly new apple orchard within the, I think it's been, it's about a 20-year-old orchard, they were not using the heavy metals and that did all the polluting that they used to use. So according to my experts, they don't feel there's any problem there, that we could have a couple, it was kind of in the works, and then when I found out, it didn't sound like it would be a problem, but maybe for the comfort of everybody, I could go have them, do them a couple tests, just to pass it along with the homeowners, if someone asks questions, and that it's been addressed.
Personally, I would like to see the testing, simply because, as was stated by the engineer, the rain gardens and the cultech systems will deal with the quantity, but the issue is the quality of the stormwater as it's going through these treatment devices, and if they're not maintained, my concern would be what is leaving the property, so I personally would like to see that testing done.
Okay.
Yeah, that's up to the owner, obviously, just to speak to treatment, these treatment devices are largely for nutrient removal, so you're removing nitrogen or phosphorus from the stormwater, so when I say treatment, it wouldn't necessarily be in line with any contaminants.
Just the contaminants coming off the surfaces that are draining into the facilities.
Correct, just your oil and greases from your driveway, or the excess phosphorus from the, the total suspended solids in the stormwater.
And have you done any well testing, Mr. Mattson?
Well, testing in what sense, what do we?
I mean, you haven't drilled wells, you haven't tested drinking water for quality.
Ah, no, we haven't, we've tested drinking water on the two lots, the one lot of budding over there, and they're tested out to be potable water, there is, I already know that there is possibility, we will have to put some treatment systems in for a natural arsenic that comes up high enough, it seems to be in that area, I've been told, but we haven't drilled any wells on there to know what we're sure.
The other concern that I would have with the phosphorus loading is, this was an orchard, I don't know what type of fertilizer they used, but I would be interested to see what the phosphorus load is of the soil prior to treatment.
I think we've got Mrs. Whalen now, without the feedback. Let's try that again.
Okay. I just want to correct what Mr. Mattson said about the apple orchard being only 20 years old, it's, it's more like 60 years old. And a lot of pesticides have been used on, on that over the years, so I think it would be worth testing to see what's going on.
Okay.
Are you, are you still getting the echo?
A little bit.
But other than those.
But I think the soil testing in terms of how it relates to pesticides would be outside the stormwater systems.
To clarify the, the age of the orchid, that, that photo, the aerial photo that's in the Ritter Building, is that from 54? From the 50s? Yeah, maybe. I'm pretty sure it shows up there, from the 50s.
Say, if it's not 50s, it's early 60s.
Yeah.
Okay.
Didn't the Red Book, let the Planning Board put them together? Anyways. That's a different hearing.
Okay.
Right?
Any other? Comments?
I also wanted to comment on the rain gardens, in my research, it talks about them not having snow plowed on them, and the position of the rain gardens is at the right, at the end of the driveway, where snow would be plowed on them.
So you're talking about the rain garden and for the lots along Flathill Road?
I, I think most of them, except for a couple lots, have, have them right at the end of the driveway near the road. I don't know if anyone has an experience.
Yeah, I did that purposely. I, I did that purposely. I tried to keep them close to the driveway, one, to catch the water, and two, I tried to keep them close and highly visible so that the homeowners actually maintain these things. You know, if they're off to the side and in overgrowth, I think, I think chances are people won't pay attention to them and won't maintain them. If they're right up against the edge of their driveway or sidewalk, I have a much better chance of actually getting maintained.
What about the issue of the, of the snow being plowed on them?
Yeah, I don't disagree. I don't know how much harm that actually does, because a lot of the plants are, you know, obviously the plants are dormant in the winter. You know, no one's going to be driving through these things. But, you know, I, I'm not going to sit here and say it won't harm them at all, but I think the, I think the benefit kind of outweighs the negative in this case.
One of, one of the concerns I have is that the east side of Flat Hill Road already has drainage issues. And if these rain gardens are not functioning correctly, we're going to end up with more water coming into the road.
Okay. One of the concerns that I have is on Lot 5, it appears as though the rain garden is extremely close to the edge of the property line. I mean, according to the plan, it looks like the stone wall is part of the rain garden. So that should be looked at just to make sure that there's enough clearance there that you're not working in the right of way or disturbing the scenic wall to construct that.
No, I don't think there's any setback required.
Slide it west.
Any other public comment? I mean, this is going to be continued anyhow, so. Anything else to add at this point in the discussion? I think we're good. I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for the stormwater management permit at 360 Flat Hill Road to September 13th at 6:35 PM.
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
Thank you, folks. Hope to see you soon.
Thank you.
True, good point. All right, moving on. Minutes approval.
Yes, Mrs. Bertram.
I am going to leave the meeting. I throw out my back, and I'm done sitting at this point. So my apologies, but I need to leave.
No worries at all. Hope your back heals better.
Thank you. All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right. Minutes approval for July 26th.
So we've got the whole, oh, no, we don't have it. So I, I would move that we approve all three sets of minutes from July 26, 21, the general minutes, the minutes of 101 Pleasant Street, and the minutes from 360 Flat Hill Road.
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
Do we need to roll code now that she's gone?
Oh, that's right.
Cool. So we can just aye, 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 right at it.
All right, moving on. Committee reports. TCP BDC.
I don't believe they've met, but if they have, I missed the meeting.
AGCON.
Meeting was not held. Farmer's Market is going not well either, because we got rained out twice.
Stormwater Task Force.
Oh, no, is it polished?
Yeah.
Open Space. That's Paula as well. Capital Planning.
Has not met since our last meeting.
Economic Development.
I'm sorry, I'm Economic Development, not Capital Planning. You can ignore me, I'm a jerk.
Capital Planning probably hasn't met yet.
Yeah. MRPC.
For MRPC and RJ and MJCT, I missed both of those meetings last, this month. I'll have to catch up via YouTube. One, I was sick, and the other, I was out of cell range.
All right. Moving on to our workshop, discussion of standard conditions.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can we jump to director's items to review the board letter for Pondview? Because that's due today.
Oh, excellent.
I mean, the town manager is going to take it tomorrow, and the board was meeting tonight, but.
Yeah. The workshop stuff, I feel like we're in pretty good shape with.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, it's just you guys looking at what's there and signing off on it. But before we get into a weedy discussion about it, I want to button this letter up so that everybody is comfortable with what's on it. And I might suggest that we just send under my signature rather than have two members not on there, or have the chair sign for the board.
Sure.
One of the two.
Yep.
Have we authorized the chair to sign for the board? Didn't we need to do that before? Joe's not?
No, I mean, you vote to let him sign this.
Oh, okay, yes, yes, yes.
It's just the letter, not decisions or anything else, yeah, or plans.
Have you gentlemen reviewed the letter?
Of course not.
I think it captures a lot of the issues that that project poses to the town, and touches on a lot of the background information, so.
Did you mention stretching the truth on the application?
I made, intimated it.
Good. Three, a three or four mile sewer extension?
I was when I first read it and continue to be a fan of significant number of geometric inconsistencies.
There you go.
I just thought was a very clear and eloquent way to lay out exactly what the issue is with the road.
Thank you.
Disc turbulence is misspelled.
What's that?
The last paragraph, fourth, fifth word.
I think the copy that we have was from the last meeting. I don't know if you.
I emailed out a copy.
Okay.
There was some really terrible spelling and grammar errors in the first one.
So you fixed them all?
Yes.
Hopefully exponential.
I can print everybody copies if you want.
No, no, I'm not, I just.
Corrected version.
No, just proper English sends a message so much better.
Me fail. English impossible.
I like it.
Yeah.
So is there anything else we want to add to the letter?
I think it does a banger job summing up issues we've expressed and that have been expressed in the town.
So I would move that we approve this letter for Adam to, forward to the town manager?
And?
I'm just going to go print it so Tanner can sign it.
Oh, perfect. There you go.
And I would second.
All those in favor of approving the letter to be sent to the town manager?
Aye.
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 Free throw.
Do we need to say anything so that you can be the one to sign it, or no? Does that really matter?
Okay.
Adam, did you want to touch on special town meeting, and then we can?
Sure. Uh, special town meeting is coming up. October, oh, no, I'm sorry, November 16th, which is, I believe, a Tuesday. And it will be, um, which is a Tuesday, 7:00 PM. The warrant closes September 28th at 5:00 PM.
I'm sorry, Adam, but my, my, my agenda says November 1.
Agendas get incorrectly.
Lost a six.
Yeah, we lost a six. So it's November 16th, Tuesday.
September 28th.
I do know that the Water District submitted to me the new Aquifer Protection Map that I think was adopted previously, and was incorrect, but.
Does it include the Keating well?
Yeah, I'll have to look at it again. I.
It should include the Keating well because it's already tied into town, town water.
Yeah, I'll have to, but where the Keating well is, the way that it's tied, it actually just corrects, I think, some of the Zone 2 in the middle of Town Lancaster, Sunny Hill area. I think the Keating well is on the map that was adopted that has never been.
I don't, I've, I've never seen it.
Properly added.
Oh.
I think it was, I'll have to look back. He, the superintendent gave me all the information, so that'll probably be on our next meeting as well, just a, a general discussion about that.
Awesome. So I think that'll impact the, the 300,000 square foot place there, too.
It might, I mean, I guess it comes down to the determination of what's native vegetation after Keating spent years removing, removing material.
True.
Did we want to loop back around to our workshop items? I feel like we have fine-tuned those pretty well.
Yeah, I mean, really what you have is what I believe are the final drafts of three different sets. Site plan being the most minimal at 17, and stormwater topping out close to 30.
You know, and I think really, reading through them, it looks onerous.
But a lot of it is just kind of standard stuff you expect people to do and understand, and it just.
It just kind of qualifies it into, here's now part decision.
So essentially, these conditions will just be kept on file and?
Yeah, I mean.
If the board has got standard conditions, um, you, I think, really, it just becomes policy. And what you would be doing is say, you know, when you approve something, say, we're going to add the standard conditions plus whatever site or project specific conditions may come up.
So the, just the standard conditions is for subdivision?
Yeah, that's subdivision and stormwater and site plan approval.
Yep. Site plan approvals, one sheet, subdivision is two sheets, stormwater is two sheets, gray bar on the right. And there's some overlap between them clearly.
So is, isn't the board's issuance of, isn't it the board's approval of a definitive subdivision?
Yeah.
And I think the same for the stormwater? Maybe, less so for the stormwater.
Do we issue the permit, or do we approve?
No, we approve it.
I mean, with stormwater, I think if six lots have to.
Yeah, and, and probably site plan approval is the issuance of, or the approval of site plan approval.
Yeah, that just sounded redundant, which is where I started, which is why issuance came in.
There you go.
And so then it was just cut and paste at that point.
Sure.
It wasn't even cut and paste, it was work off the same document and just save as.
I have a, I guess, process question. Especially as it relates to construction. A stormwater management permit for a project. Who is ensuring that it is built that way?
Several people.
The requirement of an as-built?
Well, and, and I think, you know, adding. So this should.
The requirement of an as-built would make it pretty clear to everybody.
Well, if we look at the conditions for the stormwater, it puts, so.
I mean, the second standard that shall be completed in accordance with the final approved plan.
Yeah. Sec, uh, condition seven. Because when I muted it before, they couldn't hear me. So section, uh, condition seven would, would do some of that. Prior to construction, it needs to be recorded, so then it becomes enforceable. But I guess my question is, you know, more of a process thing to ensure that. Okay, so condition 15, final occupancy permit must not be issued until an as-built plan indicating lot grading and drainage BMPs has been confirmed to be consistent with the approved plans. It says land use director, I mean, if you want them to be forced to get an engineer, and, and again, I'm not saying you do or don't, I'm saying that, we did, I wrote it. Saying that, we did, I wrote it that way to sort of ease the process. You can say the planning board's agent, and depending on the project, you could say, we think this needs to be done by graves. You know, some of the larger projects-
And I'm not looking to make it more complicated.
No.
I'm just looking at it from a, the standpoint that I, I feel like, especially where with stormwater, there's a lot of overlap with conservation. And I don't know that Mr. Morrow or Mr. Burlingame is out there, you know, looking at these projects with a stormwater permit in mind. I think they're looking at it from a perspective of, oh, silt plants, hay bales, no erosion leaving the site, that's great. But Mr. Morrow doesn't have the stormwater plan that says the rain garden goes here and there needs to be a cul-de-sac hut.
And I mean, that's an easy enough thing to, to work on, on distribution and-
And I'm not trying to put more on their plate. I'm just looking at it from a standpoint of, you know, are these individuals even aware that these lots have stormwater permits and, you know, the driveway is supposed to be here and we've-
Well, in, in-
Pipes in the ground and so on.
In the way that we approve permits, if, if there's lots that have gone through this process, when our office comments on building permits, we would, we include information about approvals this board has issued. We certainly can upload plans and, and all of that to keep consistent. Condition 19 says stormwater infrastructure must be installed at the beginning of site work and must be in place and operational prior to the issuance of building permits. So there are, are things in there that would lead to them being, being aware.
Just so that everybody's on the same page, you know, that's, that's all.
So I'll change issuance to approval. Was there any other comments? So I'll send these out to local engineering firms, Mr. Koivu, et cetera, and say, hey, just a heads up, this is, this is what's coming your way the next time, just so everyone's aware and they, they know that they can keep their clients advised.
Yep. And it'd probably be beneficial to circulate them to the boards.
Yep.
Anyone in-
And I'll post them on the website.
Land use.
Did we get, did we get Jeff's eyes on these? Might behoove us.
Yeah, I can certainly send it to him.
Yeah, just say, hey, would you give this a once-over?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm torn between having the review engineer or the land use director be reasonably satisfied.
Mm-hmm. Well, and that's, that's why I say, I mean, we keep the tri-party open through construction for review of installation of stormwater facilities.
Right. And you're not necessarily totally qualified to be reviewing an as-built plan.
I am absolutely not.
And it's taken more time of yours from your other duties.
So is your thought process to, I mean, we could leave it the way it's worded now that it can be approved?
I mean, and we can just change-
Reasonable satisfaction.
So definitive subdivision, um, that's, that's where, that's where this is. I'm, I'm not talking about a stormwater, a couple of, a couple of rain gardens. I mean, this is a definitive subdivision. I think we really should have it, the as-built reviewed by the, the reviewing engineer.
And I would say to that end, it probably makes sense to get the board's approval for a project of that sort.
Well, for, so I think there's two things at issue here. Especially with a subdivision. The board's ultimately going to have to approve the final as-built in order to release any surety that the developer has. So that doesn't need to be conditioned because that's mass general law. That's how, that's how the whole subdivision process works. This is, um, lot drainage. Not, so the final occupancy, so each individual lot needs to be approved so that, and I had come across this in, in a, in a previous job where a subdivision was designed and it met the standards and the developer went belly up and somebody else bought it. And they came in and they started rejiggering all the lots to build the house that they wanted and all of a sudden, shocking, there was drainage issues. So, and again, I mean, I'm happy to, to switch it either to planning board's agent, review engineer. And to be honest, my satisfaction might require Jeff to sign off.
So what do we currently require an as-built plan for? Anything?
Uh, site plan approvals.
We do.
Subdivisions.
Okay, so-
Subdivision is by product of, if you want your money back, you need to do the as-built.
Okay.
And so far, everyone's wanted the town to accept the road, so they also need the as-built for that. And site plan approvals, we require it, there isn't a, it's not tied to anything?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking back when, when they wanted to do the ZAC Hockey. We didn't even require them to have a stamped plan. I mean, it was hand-drawn plans. And so now we'd have to, we'd have to waive the hand-drawn, the stamped plans and we'd have to waive the as-built?
Yeah, I thought that, um, I thought that Jamie Rowe ended up doing that plan at the end.
I don't, I only remember hand sketches.
But, but these conditions, as I said, don't mean anything until they're applied to a particular project.
Correct.
This is just our standard policy that says these will be the conditions. And if we look at a particular project and say, this one we have a concern about, we want our review engineer to sign off on, you can edit the condition at approval.
Yes, I totally understand that, but I mean, there's some things that just don't require the level of most other things.
Well, and then you can take the condition out.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can strike conditions. You can say, if someone could make the motion to approve a project with standard conditions, striking number seven.
Okay.
I mean, that, that you can, that's always at your-
I just really appreciate the punch list because I feel like, especially when we have projects that are doing one or two tracks at the same time, site plan approval and stormwater permit, there's a lot of moving pieces. And this is just kind of like a checklist that says, oh yeah, what about this? What about that?
Well, and it makes it easier when you guys go to do the approval. You're not like, oh, what conditions do we do? And now it's 10 o'clock at night, we're tired.
So, um, I think at this point, we can take a vote and adopt.
Sure.
His, okay.
Paul has weighed in on this pretty significantly up until now, so. And again, if we want to change anything down the road, we can certainly do so. But I think this is a good starting point, especially seeing as how we have
We don't have any-
several projects right in front of us.
Yeah.
So.
We don't.
So, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the standard conditions for stormwater subdivision and site plan approval.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Moving forward to meeting schedule. We are at Town Hall, 6:30 PM, Monday evenings. Our next meeting, September 13th and then the 27th. Ongoing items, Pondview Commons, we've touched on the letter and-
I mean, really, it's just comment period now. Everything's due, I think, in the next week or so. The town manager's compiling all of the comments she's received into one unified package from the town. At that point, Mass Housing will do their review, review their pro formas, and make any suggestions on edits or changes to the project that might allow them to issue site eligibility to the applicant and then either issue site eligibility or not. And from that point, the applicant will begin designing the project in order to submit to the zoning board. So it's probably, I mean, we're probably six to nine months away from a filing. And then from there, you know, however long it takes. If you haven't watched it, I certainly do encourage you to go back and watch town council's presentation on 40B. There were some, there was some discussion about Pondview Commons, but overall, it was a pretty wide primer on the process, which is really probably the most important thing. Not the nuance of whatever proposal is in front of us. Especially at this point, because until it gets to the zoning board, we're really just kind of old man shouting at cloud.
All right. Public comment? Any public out there? No public comment. Any comments from the board? I have a quick public comment. I tuned in to a small portion of the selectmen's meeting and they were in the process of discussing the community host agreement for a marijuana retail facility on Summer Street. And it occurred to me that, as I understand it, as part of that host agreement, the selectmen are certifying that that particular use meets zoning. And I found it interesting and a little bit concerning because I feel like in some ways, that's put us in an interesting position because you're representing that that use meets the bylaws, the setbacks, all those type of things before it goes through site plan or-
Yes and no, I think. The, there, and I know the property you're talking about is, is Donley's Tavern. And when the group initially looked at it, there, the GIS scales the property off at less than 250 feet from the abutting property, which is also in the commercial zone. And which was, I'll say allegedly mixed use. The owner had an apartment there that had been occupied, but hadn't been occupied in a long time. And so there was questions about whether or not there was a pre-existing non-conforming use and, and those sorts of things. The, the potential cannabis retailer said, huh, well, it's 230 feet, where, you know, no engineer said they can find that. And they did an actual property survey and it ends up being over the 250. So I think the selectmen have taken the stance that they want some sort of empirical data that shows that conceptually, it meets the setback requirement before they spend their time negotiating, because I know that was one of the hangups they had down on Mass Ave was, you know, there's this, again, house across the street that may or may not currently be a residence, but has been, is within the 250 feet. This one is demonstrably not. So I think what they're looking at is making sure they're not signing host community agreements for a completely unpermissible location. And even when or if this, this group gets to the Cannabis Control Commission prior to coming here, they're going to sound, the Cannabis Control Commission will send the town a letter that says, is this a permissible location? Not, are you going to permit it? Is it permitted? It's, can you permit it? And they've given us evidence that at a minimum, they meet that setback. So the potential for it to be permitted in, in what I've seen is there. Save going through all the bylaws and all the, the things that need to go into the special permit.
It just, it, from my perspective, it, you know, the abutter is concerned about the distance and its proximity to their property. And it's a controversial use and, you know, we've had many discussions around the setbacks and the distances and residential zones and daycares and so on. And so, you know, seeing these two projects come forward, both of which confronted this distance to residential uses. And in this particular case, I feel like the abutter feels like they're, they're being kind of squeezed a little bit because they're, they've got a use there and, you know, they feel like they're within 250 feet. And there was some back and forth about whether that use was viable or not. And those type of discussions don't break out ordinarily. If somebody wanted to put a bike shop there,
Sure.
it wouldn't be a discussion, right? And so it's just, it, it certainly is in our wheelhouse and something to be aware of and-
Is that last week's meeting?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I haven't seen that one yet.
Yep. So. Interesting discussion.
And the abutter is always welcome to challenge the survey with their own survey. And I know that that's not the most, well, it's not the most resident friendly, but it, when you're presented with a stamped survey, there's a-
Well, and that's, unfortunately, that's where it becomes a little bit adversarial. One of the comments from a member of the board of selectmen was that the abutter should communicate directly with the legal team that's representing the marijuana use and, you know, I feel for a person in that situation because that's intimidating. And as a resident, I don't,
They shouldn't be.
I don't like the thought of somebody needing to go hire their own attorney or take time out of their day to go fight a fight. Like, there's a reason why we have bylaws and building codes and, and these type of processes and you know, I, I feel like, I feel for a resident who's lived in town all their life and now finds themselves in a little bit of a predicament and a room full of lawyers and engineers that can, you know, move things forward.
Well, and, and ultimately, this board is the one who makes the local approval. And so whatever agreements are made with the select board, they're based on the parameters of that specific agreement on payment should this, this use be in place. And so this is probably a more appropriate place to make that fight. I understand wanting to try and nip it early and, and have that conversation with the select board. But any host community agreement doesn't obligate the issuance of a special permit. And that's been proven through other communities where city councils or select boards have issued host community agreements and planning boards, zoning boards have denied that use for, for one reason or another.
I just recall, as we discussed that whole thing, those agreements were basically like, this is the use, this is the property and this is the tax and this is, like, it was pretty specific language that was built into that.
And I think, I think unfortunately, the, the state has not gotten hold of those agreements. There's no one who's, who's codified to review them and say that they do or don't meet any standard of, of requirement. And what we're seeing a lot of is communities requiring payments above and beyond the 3%. And so the Cannabis Control Commission has pushed the legislature to give them oversight. And so the Cannabis Control Commission has pushed the legislature to give them oversight, but it has never actually happened where they get oversight. And I think, you know, what I think you're referring to is, I believe there's a clause that says, whereas the select board has determined this property reasonably appears to meet the standards of the zoning bylaw, or something to that effect. And I think really, all they're trying to do is say what they've been shown appears to qualify that use, and I get what you're saying, and you're right, it is intimidating to stand amongst a bunch of people who, you know, have a bunch of letters after their names and use fancy words and say this, that, and the other thing, so...
And I appreciate where people are coming from in terms of, well, you're concerned and you want to get your project done, why can't you guys just hash it out? But the reality of this situation is, with certain uses, it becomes very adversarial. And I, you know, I feel bad for a resident that, in any situation, feels like they're up against a huge force, whether it's a team of attorneys or engineers, and fighting for what they feel is right for their property. So, that's it, I think we're all set.
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up because it reminded me of something that I wanted to bring up. Bright Farms.
Yes.
They backed out, they pulled out.
They did.
Did you know that?
So it was confirmed...
Just through Scott O'Bott.
It was confirmed last week, maybe? They sent a letter.
Last week?
Well, they confirmed, they told the town manager by phone. And she did announce at a select board meeting earlier in the summer.
Okay.
I want to say it was probably July-ish. They sent a letter either early last week or end of the week before to both the town manager and the chair of the select board. And essentially, what it says is, wow, you guys did a lot to help us out, but we had an opportunity to purchase an existing greenhouse that cut our mobilization to a quarter of what it would have been. It was too good to pass up. Thanks for all your help. And they donated $10,000 to the Open Space Committee.
Oh.
For, as sort of a goodwill gesture.
Rather than that piece they cut off on the E and R.
Well, I mean, there's still the potential to negotiate that out of the other property owner at some point.
So I guess the reason I brought that up was not to beleaguer the point of who knew what, but was to ask if we would be able to shop that permit out? Like, can we go to Little Leaf and say, look, there's been a considerable amount of work done, and all these approvals have been gotten, and everything's ready to just break ground?
I've had that exact same question running around my brain. Thank you for saying it.
Certainly.
I mean, I guess we could.
I mean, it would benefit us because that's the reason that we were so helpful.
Yeah, you know, I think it's complicated with Little Leaf since they're...
I don't care who it is, I just, I'm wondering if it's an opportunity for the town of Lunenburg...
Doesn't have to be lettuce, or can it be?
I was always skeptical of the end result anyway.
I mean, a million square feet of marijuana probably brings in a ton of money.
Literally.
I mean, no.
That's probably an understatement.
And I, you know, I say that flippantly, but, I mean, that wouldn't be permitted in that zone because it's a residential zone. But, I mean, sure, I guess in theory, the issue comes in that those plans aren't owned by the town of Lunenburg. They're owned by Bright Farms.
But that would be an opportunity for them to recoup some of their, that would be an opportunity for them to recoup some of their costs.
True.
And if they're going to donate $10,000 to the town as a thank you...
Why not donate $150,000 of engineering?
Probably more than that, but at this point, it's money gone.
No, it's not. They could charge for the, they could charge for the permit, right? They could recoup some of their money. We could get, we could get the business that we permitted.
I think part of the issue is they don't own the land.
No.
So you get into a three or four-way negotiation that gets, I mean, I'm not saying we can't do it, it just gets more and more complicated.
But is it some good idea, though? I mean, can we get, not even get people to the table? Can we make people aware there's a table they can come to?
Yeah, that's a problem, though, because it's...
But it's not our table.
You mentioned it, you just brought it up. So there's one owner of the property, and there's one owner of the design. That's the problem.
See, so, I mean...
Talk to the person that owns the design and say...
Would you be willing to advertise it?
Would you be willing to part with this under...
No, let them advertise it.
Well...
Let them buy the plans from Bright Farm, and that, well, I don't know, let them...
I mean, it would be up to the property owner to buy the...
Talk to Bright Farms and say, listen, are you willing to give up all this engineering that you did? And if the answer is a simple yes, then you go to the property owner, which is pretty easy to do, and say, would you entertain this and sell the property to another person with the same concept? And if they say yes, you just keep putting the pieces together. Economic development?
Yeah, there you go.
But that is an interesting parcel because it is zoned residential, and that was, I mean, it's an approved use because it's agriculture, but it's, it's a very big project to put in a residential zone like that. And arguably, probably...
One of the best residential zones for it.
A better use for the property than residential development in terms of profitability. I don't know that you would necessarily do as well.
Would further discussion of this be appropriate for the Economic Development Committee? I don't fully know the purview of that group.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, they don't get to make any decisions, but they can certainly advise, and if the folks there thought...
They can advise us that we had a good idea.
Yeah, or, you know, that logistically, it's something that would be challenging, and here's some ways that we think it could be, you know, worked out. I mean, there's some really smart people on that committee.
And if it's, if part of the idea is a little bit of matchmaking and convincing, that doesn't necessarily have to be done by this group in particular, does it?
No, no.
Yeah, no.
I mean, really, it's just kind of wheeling and dealing.
I think those are yours.
I don't know. I looked through mine, I didn't want to take yours. All right, I just wanted to make sure that it was something that it's not, oh, I do have colored plans right here.
Don't mix up your packets.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Is this me?
I don't know. What was that?